Small meeting to order. Please note that all board members are present. Remove your hats and we'll say the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, I need a motion to approve and adopt the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Got that, Elizabeth? Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? I heard seven zero. The MSBA Board Report. Elizabeth? Alright, what we're gonna do is, and we'll let Elizabeth work with that, and we'll come back to this agenda item when she gets that worked. Nobody?
No.
Nobody have public comments? Okay, let's go with the East presentation. Let's let the East presentation go.
I have a volunteer to recognize for East Elementary. So we'd like to call Kelly Ferguson. Kelly was so gracious to step up. We had a family that had been in charge of our book fair for us for many years. They moved out of the district, so last minute she volunteered her time and efforts and was there to set up the book fair, get our volunteer, our other parent volunteers there to man the book fair, and even take the book fair down. So we really appreciate her time and effort for helping us make sure our book fair was successful.
Thank you.
Yep. And next up, we have a few members of our kindergarten team. We've been working really hard on our English language arts curriculum writing the last couple of years. One of our main areas of focus was the writing progressions and things we've learned from our letters training over the past few years and how to put that in place when instructing our kiddos. So we have, the teachers have a few short slides, and then we're gonna hand it over to the students to read some of their writing samples.
Oh, you ready for the next slide?
Yes, please.
Alright, sorry.
Okay, so we have three of the kindergarten teachers here and some of our students. My name is Shelby Hentzerbrinker.
Hi, I'm Kristen Bois.
I'm Sarah Fetter.
We've been working in our classroom really hard this year on Friday and something we call bumping up their writing and just getting them to work through those phases. And that stems from the science of reading over here, which is Aries phases. So we put that in there, this doesn't reference, because we teach all of our teachers letters training. And so you'll see down there at the bottom, that's where most of our kindergartners start out this school year at, is that pre-alphabetic phase. I know it's probably hard for you guys to read way over there. But that's when they have little to no alphabetic knowledge, and then they're really just learning that symbols have sounds. And then we're moving them up into the early alphabetic phase or the partial alphabetic, where we're getting them to learn how to write what they hear. So we're not teaching them to write for perfection, but just getting them to understand that what they hear has a symbol, getting it down on paper. And then later on, in the later alphabetic phases, when you move them into correct spellings and things like that, spelling patterns and more of those difficult concepts.
So we have some writing progressions when students enter kindergarten. Some enter, we enter at different levels. So our writing progressions, a lot of them will start scribbling or they're attempting at a picture. And from there, we move on, and we have visuals later. But from there, they move on to pictures that others can recognize. Then we start labeling, once we start learning those beginning sounds. They'll start adding labels to their pictures that turn into words. And then they'll start writing, finishing what's called a sentence stem. So we will give them I see a, and they'll have a picture. And they will use the sounds to write, the sounds they hear to write a word. And from there, they'll start writing their own sentences. And by the end of kindergarten, what we would like them to do is to add details to their sentence, so maybe more than three words. I see a bear into I see a brown bear. Or this is a bear that is hunting or something. And then additional sentences as well.
So then this is kind of the framework that all the kindergarten classes are kind of working on. We do it a little bit different in each room, but we're still following the same framework. So we always warm up with a mentor text or looking at student work, looking at practicing some of those spelling patterns that they might be trying out in their writing, things like that. We do an I do, which is where we have exemplar models. We do, we do some shared writing as a class. Then they have their own time to write, which is journal or folder work. It is in a working time. And then at the end, we always share out. And we always talk about what they need to do to bump up to the next level tomorrow or the next day that they're gonna be writing. So this is what a bump up wall looks like. This is one in my classroom, so that's my name on there. And so Kathy's gonna tell us over there at the number one. Remember at a level one, what are you doing? What are you missing? What do you gotta do to bump up?
We, um, like, have to color.
Okay, so you need colors, bump up to a two. What do you gotta do to get to a three?
Um, make detail.
Mm-hmm, details, for sure.
And then, like, add label.
Mm-hmm.
Write what you are doing.
Yep, write what your story's about. Yes, ma'am, good job. So then we have some examples for you also here with the kiddos. So Mrs. Everly has a couple student examples.
Jay, wanna talk about yours? I can help you. So we are working on having a sentence stem, I see a, and our students are finishing with whatever they would like to draw out. It looks like we were talking about our bell this time. Jay, do you remember what sentence you wrote? Can you tell everybody? How about I see, can you just say it? Sound good? I see a snowy. Who's snowy? So Jade wrote about her elf snowy. It looks like he was hiding in her mug. And she drew herself and her brother. And that's the next one. And her next step will be continuing to work on sentence stems. And then a sentence all on her own. I told Jade. Okay, now this is Scarlett. Scarlett, you wanna talk about yours?
This is the table. This is my elf in the Yahtzee cup, me playing Yahtzee. And this is my Barbie in the Barbie cup. And these are Christmas presents. And up top, those are Christmas presents. And that's the elf's, those parts.
So you have your own label. And then can you read your sentence to everybody?
I see a elf in a.
Awesome job, Scarlett. So this, this is Aria. Alright, tell them about this one. So what does it say?
I see a rat.
So she has, I see a rat. You wanna tell them about your picture? No? It's a rat. And then we talked about we want to bump up our writing. And do you remember what you did to bump up your writing?
I were words.
She added more words. So her next sentence was?
I see a cat, Callie.
So she added her cat's name. I see a cat, Callie. Good job. Oh, I'm sorry. Alright, Mr. Weston. So Wes, this is Weston. And can we show them real quick? That's his original picture, but we talked about adding details. I just wanna show how much detail he added. For that, I'm really proud. So do you wanna read them your first one?
I see a cat.
Good job. And then what did you do to bump up your writing?
You add more detail.
Okay, so he did a different one. You wanna read that one?
I.
It says, I see a person holding a candle. He did a very, he added lots of words. Alright, this is Megan's.
Hi, Megan.
I'm gonna read it. Okay, she's gonna read the first one. And what did you do to bump up your writing? Added more words. Do you wanna read that?
I see a owl in a tree.
And so Megan did a great job. I asked her to add detail to her picture. This is before we were adding details to our sentences. And I went around to check, and she had the whole page written.
Okay, so we have, ours are kind of updated since this as well. You guys turn these in early. So we work on writing every day. So I've got Shay here. And this is one piece that she was working on a couple weeks ago. And we work really hard on filling in all the white space and lots of details. And you'll see here on her previous work that she's got some labels there. Since then, wanna show everybody what you got today?
Yeah.
Okay, today, this was hers. And it says, can I read it or do you wanna read it? Okay, it says, I live at home with my family. So, super sweet and lots of details. And so her next step, she finished that one today. So she'll start a new piece tomorrow. And then you have the next slide for me, too. Thank you. And then I have Riker here. And same as well, since the last time, he was working on that one. And he has a new piece today. This is Riker's new piece today. And it says, I'm playing football. And you can't see it because he colored the helmet, but it had a little W on there for a while. And he's got his labels and wonderful, wonderful details. So he'll start a new piece tomorrow as well. So then we talked about next steps as a team. We talk about that a lot at Impact and Curriculum Writing. We're constantly looking at how we can keep pushing these kiddos forward in their learning. And next is having them finish those sentence stems with correct punctuation, really what a complete sentence looks like, capital letters, punctuation, spaces, all those things. And then extending their writing all by themselves. So, it'll be fun.
Any questions for the board?
Thank you, guys, for sharing. This is awesome.
MSBA President Ruth Johnson got the conference off to a great start during the first general session. During her remarks, she shared the story of her.
Okay, so you all, you're welcome to stay. But if you have to get your kids home, you're free. Thank you, guys, for everything.
Great job, guys.
Have a good Christmas break.
Welcome to the December edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the 2023 MSBA Annual Conference. In cooperation with Massa and Boazbo, this year's event was once again held in Kansas City. MSBA President Ruth Johnson got the conference off to a great start dur- During the first general session, during her remarks, she shared the story of her transformative journey through public education and how school board members make journeys like hers possible.
Each of you, as passionate members of your local school boards, holds a key to that transformation for your students. Your belief in their potential, regardless of their background, can change the course of their entire lives. You possess the ability to pave the way for brighter futures, offering hope and opportunities where none seem to exist. Education is the great equalizer, breaking down the walls that social and economic hardships build. It provides a platform for dreams to flourish, talents to be nurtured, and potentials to be realized. As members of the school board, we are the gatekeepers of this transformative power, able to shape educational policies and programs, able to, that level the playing field and other genuine opportunities for all.
ABC News veteran and creator and host of What Would You Do?, John Quinones, was the keynote speaker for the second general session of the conference. His presentation detailed his odds-defying journey and celebrated the life-changing power of education.
Yes, today, I wouldn't be the man I am today had it not been for the education I received in public school and then in college, at a time when all the odds were stacked against me. And so then, along came my first hero besides my mother and father, and it was my English teacher. My English teacher, Mrs. Gutierrez, in 10th grade at Brackenridge High School. When everyone else had told me, you're not college material. You know, no one in your family's ever gone to college. You speak with a funny accent. You don't have any money. Your grades aren't all that great. When those teachers, you know, what gives you the audacity, John Quinones, to think you could go to college? When those teachers told me that, my high school English teacher, Mrs. Gutierrez, did the opposite. She said, Johnny, I love the way you write your essays in English class. I love the way you tell stories. Have you thought about journalism?
Missouri's 2024 Teacher of the Year Greg Kester spoke during the conference's third general session and banquet. Kester is a social studies teacher at Petosi High School in the Petosi R3 school district. He said that when people wonder about the status of our state and nation, the answers we are looking for are right in front of us.
The test of a nation's status is the quality of its citizenry. And I have good news. My country is full of good, quality citizens. I'm staring at a group of good, quality people right now, and I can prove it. What do you call a person who runs for an elected office that does not pay? Now, that sounds like a school board member, but at the core, it is really just a quality person. The key attribute to the best quality people is not their patience, not their ability to forgive the eternally unhappy, but their capacity to love and to serve. It is easy to love one's spouse, one's family, one's friend, and one's neighbor. The capacity to love and serve in this instance in which I speak is love for what I refer to as the generalized other, which is much more difficult. The generalized other is the person that you may never meet, the person whose name you will never know, or the kid attending your school district that you will never see. It is this ability to love and serve that is required of elected school board members every day. This love and service is a reflection of people of quality and citizens of virtue. These are the people who run for an office, not to build a resume, not for personal gain, but to serve their neighbor, their community, and the children in their local public school. It is a great thing, this thing we call public service.
In addition to the outstanding general sessions, the conference featuring more than 70 concurrent sessions on a wide range of topics, Missouri's premier education trade show, the Education Expo, MSBA Student Showcase of Public School Programs, and much more. MSBA's Delegate Assembly also met in conjunction with the annual conference to establish the position statements that will guide advocacy work throughout the coming year. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thank you for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and thank you for your dedication and the amazing work you've done throughout all of 2023 to ensure all students succeed. We'll see you again in January of 2024 for the next MSBA Board Report.
See if you might want to add anything to that. Okay, moving on. We did the East presentation, so high school and East Edition updates. Just so everybody know that some of the Board of Education visited East today, and we kind of looked at the product over there. And we looked at, you know, it kind of explains this as a punch list of things still happening over there. But other than that, take it away. We're close, we're close. We'll start out with the East Elementary, and we'll have Eric Wilson present. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. So, yes, a few of you went over today. I was over there actually today also. We did a punch list last week. There's a lot of small items for them to address. There's a few bigger items that they need to address so that the fire marshal can do his inspection, and we can get occupancy. But once those things are done, I do think, based on what they've accomplished so far in the last week, they'll linger a little bit longer than we'd like them to, but we're gonna be pushing on them. I know the district's been calling, the contractor, and we've been emailing and calling. We're just trying to get them to get people there to finish up items. Do we have some slides? So it's the hall, the main hallway that goes down between the four classrooms. It's a stained concrete finish. It's still, it needs to be cleaned up. It's been on the list for a while. Hopefully, they get after that and get it ready for you guys. Bathroom, men's and women's. This is all part of the storm shelter with the shared sink area. This is one of the classrooms. These are kindergarten classrooms. Small kids, so there's cubbies, there's casework, a lot of storage. And if this is whiteboard with the tack boards and part of the storage, you can see on the left. More shelving and storage. So there's, I'm not gonna say no. There's enough for the class, as long as you guys stay reasonable with your class size.
The one thing I did notice is that those top cubbies, those top shelves, kids aren't gonna reach those.
The kids are not gonna reach those. They will need help on some of them. But it's storage also for the teacher.
It's on the slides.
Anymore? We would like to have seen a little bit further movement on the punch list. I know the fire launches is the big one they're working on. They're supposed to be doing programming on it next week. So we'll probably maybe back out again next week just to keep pushing on them and make sure that they're doing stuff. They are supposed to get us a checklist of things they've done on the punch list. I think it's 120 items on the architectural and maybe another 15 to 20 on the MVP side of things. And again, a lot of them are small. Clean this up, blew this down better. But there are some other items we want them to address.
Any questions for Dr. Berger? Excuse me, Jeremy, or Eric regarding the East Elementary updates?
I guess I struggle with the speed that this contractor's working at regarding when we take into consideration how far behind schedule they are. That's extremely frustrating.
Yeah, I could agree. I don't understand why more things aren't done on punches, because a lot of those items are the general contractor's responsibility, not necessarily an electrician or a sub. I can tell you that we are calling them and contacting them. Repeat it, they're emailing phone to get out there and address things.
Are you getting responses from them as to, are they just calling on deaf ears?
They're saying they're working on it, and yes, they're responding. But I was there today, and there's a lot to be done.
Anything else? Let me ask a board member. When will these rooms be seen students after Christmas break?
That's the plan. And I was gonna add, and Dr. Wayne would be more specific than I can on this project, perhaps if, you know, we're at, the meeting is pushed back one week next month. So it's not the third Thursday, but the fourth Thursday. If we don't, if we're not occupying those rooms, we probably want the contractor to come in and ask questions directly to them. We'd invite them in, because we're obviously, over the last few meetings, we're losing our patience a little bit, and we want those rooms.
And they are telling us we'll have them.
Mr. Mike is, so we're occupied when we come back?
So 1-3 is our first day back, it's PD day. And so we're gonna try to, 26th and 27th of December are big days. That's when fire marshals coming in. We're gonna get occupancy hopefully on those days. Then 1-4, we're planning on teachers and kiddos being in there on January 4th.
So are you gonna furniture in?
We're moving furniture in this weekend.
The flooring and all the classrooms clean right ago?
Yeah, that flooring. We're talking mainly about the hallway.
Okay.
The hallway's the that needs to clean up.
Just gonna drag it all on the clean part now. That's fine.
The rooms are big. I mean, Beth and I were over there, and we were commenting how big those rooms are and how the kids will be able to spread out and, you know, do what they need to do to learn, so.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's two parts that makes it flexible for, you know, older kids also, but also gives you the ability to set up the rooms in different styles, not just the rows and columns type seating. And then it's the storm shelter, it has the whole little building in all four of those rooms. You gotta get every kid in there and all the staff. So a little, they're good size.
Are there contractors that have been used on the East project that we know we have reasonable reasons to not, or to ask our contractor to not use them anymore? So we could ask.
There are subs that we would, we would wanna see a sub list. And there are subs, I think you would definitely say yes to please use the other bid.
Thank you.
Because they should have multiple bids from subs, and if there's one on that list that we had an issue with, yeah. I think it's reasonable. Anything else?
Moving on. Thank you, Eric. And then we're gonna do the high school with Mr. Christopher, and then we'll look at the chain orders. So we'll do the general presentation.
I guess. Thanks for having me here. It's me, I shake my head. So another month's gone by. A lot of significant changes we're gonna see on repeat. But we're working on the utilities at the athletic field, so primarily this football field. The drainage system's now complete. There are some utilities on the backside of the retaining wall in the north end that need to go in yet. They're in the process, they just need to be connected, so electrical, reinforcement, a few other things. Society utilities are ongoing. We're working on, you know, making that juncture across the box culvert, working on the east side of that creek, start to tie all that work together. Interior building slab plate. Uh, interior building slab placement is ongoing, continue to that, do that work throughout the winter. Uh, we just watch the weather, try not to blanket it, uh, we pick up the cost for, you know, the winter mix and stuff, the ad mixes that go in, but we try to keep that work ongoing until it's done. Uh, underground MEP work within the building is pretty much complete, uh, with the exception of some of the stuff in the cafeteria, uh, but primarily, I'd say roughly ninety-eight percent of the underground roughs complete throughout the entire building footprint. Uh, a lot of stuff moving forward, obviously masonry is going to continue.
Brick veneer just started, uh, so the first, uh, the trickiest area of the project, but the, uh, uh, courtyard, couldn't think of the name. Uh, so we're doing the brick on those now, we have about two weeks, uh, left in the first courtyard in the area of D. Um, so if you get a chance to look at that, it's pretty neat looking products, not the standard, you know, red clay brick. You see, it's kind of got a, a darker tint to it, so it's a pretty neat color. Uh, interior masonry is ongoing, so we've got a couple of areas that, we've got interior block to do, CMU, we use that for fallback, so if we get too cold weather to work outside, we've got areas that we're tentative inside to proceed with that work on those days, so we use that as fallback work. Uh, interior framing is ongoing. Right now, we're setting a lot of trusses, uh, the decking's following, you know, within a day or two behind that, and then right construction's following through and putting what we call sleepers on, and then putting the sheeting on top of that, and getting it prepped for the roofing. And roofing's ongoing right now as well, both shingle and the TBO. Uh, so we're seeing a lot of progress with that. Uh, moving forward, it's just a lot of the same, you know, really through the end of the winter, the building envelope wrapped up. Here's a couple photos of the, uh, the underground drainage system at the football field. Uh, again, all that work's tied in, so now, you know, later today, we're going to talk about the, the remediation options, uh, but we do have it now to where water's not really the sole factor of that, right? It's the soil type, but keeping that dry and, and keeping that water draining out's a huge positive to be down in that basin. Next slide, please. Uh, interior slab placement, uh, so again, it's just continuing activity. What you see in the yellow is a vapor barrier, and then it's a, it's a tape on top of that to hydroseeds or cover your seams and minimize the vapor coming in, then the mesh on top of that, and then obviously the, the concrete gets poured on top of that slab. That's what you're looking at. Uh, next slide, please. That's a picture of the, the rigging of the, the trusses, cold form metal trusses. Again, can't say, uh, can't say enough about the crews we have out there, both between really everybody, but the masons and, and the framing contractor are just doing an incredible job for us. Uh, every minute's counting. Next slide, please. Uh, some of the ongoing masonry. Uh, this is a hydro, uh, hydro lip, hydro scaffold, um, just topping out walls, been doing a lot of that. Next slide, please. Uh, it's a picture of the courtyard, so it's a hard, hard to get a good picture of what that brick actually looks like, but that's the first area that the brick veneer's going on, and then we've got some interior masonry in the second slide, or second photo. Next slide, please. Uh, insulation, so we, we had an insulation change from going to the, from the sheet poly to the, uh, the open cell, uh, fire rated spray foam, so that's what you see, and it's, it's roughly anywhere from ten and a half to, you know, to a foot in depth, uh, to get that R value. It's not a, a pretty product by any means, but this gets up, gets the R value we're looking to achieve, and ultimately you get a sub ceiling of drywall. Uh, that's a sub ceiling because you still have a cool ceiling below that, so really it's just more of a fire barrier and, um, utilized for fire and sound. Uh, this is retaining wall at the north end of the football field, so this is the area that we're, we're trying to complete the, the balance of the site utilities. On the backside of that wall, between that wall and where ultimately the road's going to go, uh, we've got some utilities that go in, so it's just an ongoing activity of coordination between, you know, the wall getting built up and then, you know, MEP penetration's going through, and then more layers, and then making the connection. Uh, so that's very close to being wrapped up now. The wall itself is wrapped up now, we're just tying in the MEPs. Uh, overhead shot of the entire site, I shouldn't say the entire site, because you don't see all of the East, but, uh, a lot of progress has been made since last month. Any questions for me?
Anybody have any questions? I think we'll have a question when the change order is coming. Let's go ahead and move on.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Bobby.
Absolutely, thank you.
Uh, maybe just the summary page, change order nine, of course, that's the unsuitable soils.
Go for it.
Well, uh, I know the board has seen that or taken.
Why don't you, why don't you just, just for everybody's education, just give us all baseline, what's going on?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll further, like, our tech do that.
Now, go ahead, give us the baseline, what's going on. Go for it.
Yeah, so. We just keep pushing it.
No, that's all right. Uh, you know, stabilization's always a tough thing. Uh, where this football field sits, it's, it's down at the bottom of the deep cut and on the other side of a, you know, a, a creek, a river, I guess it's a creek, but it's a blue stream creek. Um, so with that, the deeper we dug, what we found were, were silty soils. Um, it's not necessarily the water that you collect on there, it's the soil type. So ultimately, we have SCI as a third-party consultant, they do all the, the outsourced testing, all third-party testing. They came back and their recommendations were to either use Codell or lime to stabilize it. Uh, both of those products are very similar. Uh, basically, the way they're worked is, is you dig in the area, you till it in, it's a, it's just a very fine powder mix. Uh, they're, you know, able to withstand the cold temperatures and, and water actually makes them harder. Uh, so the idea behind this is, is to go twelve inches deep, uh, with this product, mix it in, get it to a point where the, the ground becomes hard and firm, and then ultimately that gets capped with a rock that's going to go underneath the track and then underneath the, the playing surface of the football field as well. Um, it is a necessary evil. Uh, ultimately, you have to have this for that football field to be functional if you're going to go with the turf. Uh, that turf has to be stabilized, and basically what you're looking at in a turf product, it's, you know, I don't want to call it a carpet, but it, it, it's basically an outside carpet that's going to bring through the flaws of anything below it over time. So, just like anything else, that substrate has to be solid for that, to have longevity that's going to need for you guys to hold up and, and play games on it over the course of the next, you know, a hundred years. Um, you know, the, the remediation you do underneath that turf is going to long outlast the turf itself, you know, but, uh, over the years, you'll have to replace the turf every, what, twelve to fifteen years probably. Um, anyway, the substrate's going to have to be solid, so hopefully I answered your question, if there's any other questions on it, please, I'm, I'm all ears.
So, the one thing, when Chris and I talked about this originally, he talked about how SCI ran the test, and was there a third test run again? Because Chris said something to me about it, it, it was wet out that day or something when they ran the test and.
Proof rolling.
The proof roll.
Yeah, the proof rolling, yeah, so, thank you. Can you kind of, uh, articulate a little bit about, did they run another proof roll or?
They ran, they ran multiple, Austin, I don't know how many that was, if there was three, I know at least two. Uh, so what they do is, is once they get that down to the natural substrate, uh, once you're down to almost, you know, your, your final rough grade, I'll call it, then you, you back in a, a heavy loaded truck, so the truck's fully loaded, and, and all you're doing basically is seeing how far that tire indents in the ground, and really got to the point out there with the first one, with it still being wet and saturated, it, you knew it was going to fail right away. Um, after some drier weather kicked in and some other further cuts were done, I mean, again, you're down to like silty soils. Uh, I know the second one failed equally as miserably. Um, I don't know if there's a third yet or not.
Well, that's funny. I mean, he was trying to explain this to me the other day, and I just, you know, I think, just from a, you know, for everybody's perspective, I guess we just need to understand, you know, why, why we're, we're proposing this remediation and that part of it is that the proof roll failed.
Right.
And, you know, in order to remediate that, we're, you know.
A proof rolling is not exclusive to just the football field.
Yeah, correct.
They can do a proof roll just by any time you guys are performing flatwork.
Everywhere, yeah, anywhere that you got pavement going down, anywhere that there's a finished product going down, you'll have proof rolls, and, um, so to back up a little bit, the company that's doing all the athletic fields is Vernon Jones, are a very reputable company. Um, they would not, just to put it in layman's terms, they would not proceed with the field without having remediation done as a warranty, um, issue. So ultimately, you know, what, what happens in that process is, you know, the, the airport contractor gets a prep, they get it set up for a proof roll. Um, Vernon Jones, in this case, comes out, they have to witness the proof roll and say whether they're going to accept or deny the, the proof roll. Uh, obviously, there's a third party there that's going to provide their recommendations, in this case, SCI, and they clearly said, yeah, we need to provide our options for remediation. It took about a week, week and a half to get a letter of the four options. Uh, four options were priced, it was basically going with a, a quick line, either, you know, twelve inches in depth or fourteen inches in depth, or a Codell in twelve inches in depth or fourteen inches in depth. Uh, ultimately, and, and, uh, talking to the civil engineer, you know, being that it's a, a football field, you're not parking semi trucks on it, uh, they felt that the twelve inch depth was fine either with the Codell or the line, in this case, and, and it was elected to propose the, the lesser of the two options, uh, which ended up being a Codell. I'm sorry, the clip, I'll do it online.
Can I answer my questions? Anybody have any additional questions on this particular topic of remediation?
When SCI did the initial boring all over the raw land before anything started, I guess I struggled to understand why they did it on the foundations and parking, but they're going to do it for the future. I thought it.
So, um, generally, they, we always like to do it under the, uh, the building footprint. Um, you know, every hole is, is a cost, so we did, under the building footprint, um, which is big, you guys have all been out there, and then under the parking area is a, a few times. We didn't do down there because it's such a deep cut. Um, so, say you did do it, and you went down twenty feet, twenty-five feet to do that test, and you found water, that water could be there, or it could not be there, depending on the time of year, the weather that year. Um, it's just not, it's not conclusive enough to spend the money to do all of those holes. Um, and it's why, on the, the parking lot areas, we did know that we had to have some kind of contingency in there for some stuff, because we found some things. Um, as it turned out, the, the road, uh, the roads and, and the paving areas haven't been too bad, but once we got down that twenty feet, they did run in stuff at the field.
Is that the cut at the football field, is twenty feet?
It's, it's about twenty feet.
But it's, it's probably, yeah, real close to twenty-foot cut there.
Um, so, we could have done some borings and found nothing or found something, um, but we had, at the time, we didn't do any testing in the, in that stadium area.
And then one, just follow-up report, so, uh, civil engineer was comfortable with, with twelve-inch, you know, um.
Line?
Yeah, line, and I guess mix it all together and then put dirt over top of it, so that will satisfy the sub for the football field.
Yes, yeah, they're the ones that priced that option kind of, yeah, they're comfortable with it, just a little on there.
Does anybody else have any questions on this particular item? Okay, are we voting on this one first, or are we doing them all together?
I do, uh, separate, or whatever.
I did, I did, I did this one together, but whatever you want to do. Okay, so, just doing this one, so, is there any, is there a motion to approve this particular, uh, change order for the, for the remediation? Okay, there's a motion in second, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Seven-zero. Next one.
Change order.
And again, uh, whomever's speaking, just kind of, you know, give us the lay of the land on this one, is why is it the same, uh, sure, the same, uh, area, or same understanding? Sorry.
Absolutely. I'm going to get closer so I can read it, but, uh.
That's cool.
I can read it from there, I just can't see it, my eyes are a bit blurred. Am I anybody's way? So, the, the first line here, this potential change order thirty, it's additional steel numbers at the front entrance can be. Uh, the long and short behind this, it's delegated design. Uh, so on bid day, we've got, we've got criteria to follow that we're bidding. So if you're a steel fabricator, you're bidding based off the criteria provided, based on the preliminary calc we ran by the structural engineer. Um, in this case, we actually hired SSC to do the, do this work for us, to do the calculations for us, and what they determined was they needed to increase the size of the steel. And I don't know the numbers of the, the tonnage in front of me, but it was substantial. Uh, really only added, um, a couple thousand dollars worth of labor, not even, not even that much, I don't think, but I think it was twelve hundred bucks. I have to look at the breakdown. Ultimately, what you're seeing here, for the most part, of that seventeen thousand dollars is the actual steel itself, uh, to be fabricated, shipped out there, and then ultimately replaced. Um, going into PC, PCO thirty-two point one, it's mechanical electrical plumbing changes. Uh, this was based on a revision that was sent to us for pricing. Um, that amount ended up just, just north of six thousand dollars, but it was all, uh, requests that you guys had, had, came to the design team with, and we proposed on that. Uh, potential change order forty-one, this is a booster pump, and really where this is at is, is right now, the water pressure on the site's marginal. Um, right now, it, it's borderline acceptable, but if there's any further development on Roker Road, or if you add additions onto the property itself, if you expand it any time in the future, you're going to need this pump because you're not going to have the, the capacity and the volume of water that you want. Um, I believe, Bond, you guys checked with PWSD, and there are no future plans to do any improvements along Roker Road that would help increase your water volume?
Yeah, so, yeah, we, we ran down with our engineers, you know, the numbers and that, the numbers that they're ca, you know, comfortable with, um, and it's just right on the verge. Um, to begin the design, it was a little bit higher, but once they got water running on the site, uh, there was another test done, and it's just dropped some since the first test, uh, early in design. Um, and with the potential of you guys adding on and other construction along Roker, um, no one on the design team is, is comfortable not adding the booster. Um, they, they think you're, you would put it at risk, um, of failure.
How much is this booster that'll pressure by?
I don't know that.
The reason I ask is because the developments in Roker actually, honestly, around the whole entire school, they're not going to slow down, and I know Public Water District Number Two is going to drag their feet as long as possible until they reinvest in infrastructure.
Yeah, they have no plans to do anything for, um, at least six years before they've even come with some sort of plans to do increased stuff, is what I'm told. I think, um, I can find out the pressure, I can let you guys know. I don't, I don't know if it has a range on it or not, um, like that it would just keep it at that no matter what the incoming is, um, but I'll find out.
And I think maybe if I could follow up with Kyle there, and I think where you're going is, we want to, if we make the, the change, that's pending, I, we want to make, be confident that when phase two comes along, it handles that, right? So, if we're going to spend the ten thousand now, then be dealing with this again in twenty, thirty, or thirty-five, or whatever.
Yeah, and any additional reduction in pressure off the lines, which are going to happen with every new house they get stuck up, I don't want to be faced with the decision in three or five years that we didn't put in enough of a booster, so.
I like that.
I'm sorry, this is last second.
No, no, I like that they respect that, uh, I think they are, he'll confidently did, but we'll get it affirmed.
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that and the ca, you know, the capabilities of it. I'm with Eric, I can find out, I'm sure you guys know that on that bill. Um, the one positive to doing it now is it'd be less invasive than doing it later, obviously. You know, you're not getting vegetation, you're getting it done. If you had to do it in the event you had school in session, you obviously have to shut your water down, do backdoor tests. Again, I'm not trying to sell it, but I sincerely think as long as it's sized right, it'd benefit you doing it now versus later.
Um, yeah, I'm not saying, no, it's good, I'm just.
Sure.
The opposite end.
Right, understood. Um, does everybody get on the booster pump? Any, any other questions there?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Is there a tank associated with this, or is it just a pump?
No, it's just a pump itself, Dave.
How does, then, I mean, I, I get how the pump gets more pressure, but at the end of the day, it doesn't get you any more water to your site.
Yeah, it's all relying on the volume of water going through the pipe. It's not a good question, I'm not an expert in that area, but, uh, it is just a pump itself, it's, there's no water reservoir of any kind.
I just, I just think that the pump is kind of superficial, because if there's no water to the pump, what is the pump going to pump?
Sure.
Eric, have, what, do you have an answer for that?
I, I don't, I was trying to think of the size of water line we've got coming in, I think it's board, but I.
I think the main going down is a eight-inch, I believe.
The, so, I don't know if it's a flow, if there would be a flow issue more or less of, you need a certain pressure for the, the heads to work for the sprinkler system. Um, but it's a, I'll ask the question too, if, if there's a limited, like, if there's a, a flow that has to have for that pump to work, to boost the pressure.
Do you understand where I'm coming from?
Yes, yeah, because I've, yeah, I've seen tanks on other, um, kind of rural sites where we had to add a tank in there, a lot more expensive than a booster pump. Um, I'll, I'll find out.
So let me ask, let me ask the board a question and I'm gonna ask you all a question too. So we have two questions outstanding. Does it make sense to approve this particular item tonight, given those outstanding questions? And if we, let's say, we want to get answers to that before we approve it.
Sure.
What is the impact? What's the side effect of us waiting a month?
There's none. I mean, other than a slight chance of material price increase, delaying this decision a month is not gonna impact the project.
Okay.
Or for this item.
Okay.
So the booster pump itself, yes or no?
So let us, let Bobby finish the rest of it and then we can have that conversation. Well, now we want to get the answers to the pump questions and postpone that till January and then we get those answers. Or if you all learn, just, you know, go ahead and prove it and then if they have to come back with an additional delta on it based upon their answers, then we can deal with that the next month. We can decide as a team what we want to do there. Okay, next time. I'm asking my name of the questions.
PCO 48, this is a main water and fire protection at the entry changes. So what this is, is we've got fully grounded cells where you pass through openings going through the main corridor. And so this is to job the fire protection lines and the, you know, any other MEPs right there. Basically, you gotta drop down and go around and back up versus going through a fully grounded cell that we can't do. So that's, that's where this came in. Total burden on that's $8,878. There's, help me with this Eric. You want to say there's three areas? Or is there two?
Just two.
Two. So you got the main entrance when you come into area A, as you get to the backside of that corridor. Then there's a second area about 30 foot beyond that where this is impacted. Anything you want to add to that? Any questions on PCO 48? PCO 49, these were owner requested camera changes. There's a few, a few, there were added camera locations. And then the relatives associated with that, get that work into the block. Again, anything you want to add to that, Eric?
No, I think it was, it's really a better end of the design, what the changes that were made. It's gonna make the system.
We recently did camera upgrades. One of the things, as our, you know, potentially our campuses grow, whether it's HVAC or cameras, to get those uniformed, to make it more efficient for Andrew's team or whoever, whoever might be in charge of doing the maintenance and work on those. So this is an owner request, but we really like, was it east elementary or west? Oh, excuse me, west elementary. Put these cameras in, so we came back and wanted to upgrade those cameras. We think that makes a lot of sense in the long run.
I was gonna kind of clean this up and present something to you guys at the next meeting, but I did break down the change order numbers. And collectively, we're under 1% as a whole, which is great. I bring this up because I believe last meeting somebody asked the industry standard. Industry standard this percentage is like 5 to 10%, and that's because there's a wide range of size projects. Generally, you know, what we see is between 3 and 5% collectively. We try to be south of that, obviously. The lesser the better. But I think you guys pull this, you're looking pretty good. Just running through, you know, the high end numbers of these over 1%, it's 1.037% our owner requested changes, which actually are, it's, the bulk of the change orders, the pre-engineer metal building, which is more than 1% of what the total project budget was or what our contract is anyway. Airs and emissions, it's far less than 1%, it's 0.166%. Unforeseen conditions, we're sitting at 0.0063%, which is very good. Value engineering, it's a negatives, we're at negative 0.64%. AHJ design changes, so these were requirements from FIRE or Citi, just with design change was 0.341%. And then the total changes to date were at 0.96%. So again, collectively, being this far into the project, knowing that there's more deducts on this job than adds is a very positive thing. You're still sitting south of 1%. So I just wanted to put that out there. It's financially looking really good this way. Not that I'm selling this, I just wanted to put that out there at the same time I had it.
So Beth and I had on that, on that steel trusses at design time for some of the stuff. Beth and I had asked a question to Chris about, have we done with these?
Delegated design.
Delegated design, sorry. And I think the answer he gave us was yes, we're pretty much done with these delegated designs. Would you concur with that?
Yeah, so on this job, the only real delegated design is the front canopy along with the fire protection. Fire protection, something you typically see on every job is a delegated design. You've got criteria to meet, but you know, every, every fire protection sub does things slightly different.
Trusses.
And then the trusses and retain walls are other two very common ones.
No, only thing I can think of is if you guys move forward with the greenhouse, there might be something that comes up there. Because that's an entity that does that design, but it's kind of a package deal too, so I don't know if it's.
Supposed to be kind of plug and play, but then you remind the board that the reason why we pulled that project or that piece out of the project is because we can run that through a hand spade grant. Dark way 7525 on hand spade grant.
Depending on the year, how much money you can build.
Yeah, so that was a little savings that we caught, you know, by pulling that out of the project. So it's cumbersome for them to kind of work through because they don't have a clear picture of what, what we're getting, but it's gonna save us some money at the end.
Yeah, I guess Austin answered your question fully. The pre-engineer, they fall into that category as well. They've got their own designers that basically build that thing, you know, start to finish, so.
Where will the sprinkler systems go?
They started already. They're doing brackets and hangers and they got a lot of material on site. They're starting with things.
Okay, so the question tonight on this is, do you want to pull, pull the booster pump till next month? I'll go ahead and approve what they got in the, what they got proposed.
I would personally prefer pull it, push it out 30 days, let them go back, do some more research. They're not in a rush.
That would be my preference as well.
I agree.
Me too.
Is that an issue for you guys?
No, not additional.
All right. So the motion I need, I believe, is to approve PCOs 30, 32, 1 dot, 32 dot 1R, 48 and 49. And then whatever that adds up for or whatever the total cost is. I can't do that math. So that would be the motion.
So move.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and second. Any more discussion?
I, I do just have a little bit of a discussion. So I appreciate you getting the percentage of the change orders that we've had so far. Are we, are we at all concerned about dipping into having enough money to put furniture?
We're not at this point. No, we're monitoring it and Dr. Way is monitoring it, believe me. So yeah, we're monitoring that closely, but we're in pretty good shape right now. I feel pretty good. Of course, the later we get in the project, the better we're gonna feel, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions on that booster pump that the board needs other than the tank and the capacity of the pump? Those are the two outstanding questions that we have for Bobby and Eric, right? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. See you guys in January.
Fourth Thursday, fourth Thursday.
Okay, master plan. If you want to sit around, listen to more potential money for your stuff.
Thank you.
Good night.
You too.
No.
Thank you, Mrs. White.
We are actually gonna triple team this, but I'm gonna kind of lead off, I'm gonna hand it off to Dr. Way. And then I think we're gonna let Doug Smith be our closure on it. So we'll get started here. I've actually forgot to put Mr. Smith on there, so. Put him on there now. Go on to the next slide, please. I want to really pause here. I'm not gonna read this to you, but I am gonna read the bold. And if you, you know, the board has seen the master plan draft, this is the presentation that accompanies that. And we've never had a master plan. Now, a master plan can sometimes be used for a building, just for a building, you call that the master plan. But a district master plan, at least we don't believe we've ever had one in the district, so this is our first one. But I'd like to, like for you to think of this like the strategic plan for everything else, you know, retention and recruitment of teachers and most importantly, academic deployments, but the other two elements of that. That the board needs to look at the master plan, particularly our district. I should also say, it's not a horrible thing that we haven't had a district master plan. Districts that are static and rolling, it's not common. They might have a, they might have a district master plan. More likely, they may have a building or a facility plan, you know, like, like Dr. Way has put together for us. It talks about rooftop units or roofs or things of that nature. So this is a more broader look, but certainly with what we think's coming in the next decade and beyond, this needs to be looked at. It doesn't need to be blown up. We've said in the strategic plan, the CSIP plan, you know, we're gonna make changes to that annually. And then, you know, about year four, we're gonna basically blow it up and re, regroup and create another five year plan. This was more like a 10 year cycle. So I'm gonna read this to you now. Board of Education recognizes that this long range facility plan must be a living, ever changing document because no document can take into account all future issues. So whether the board changes, administration changes, this needs to be put on a perpetual cycle to come back and revisit. Next slide, please. Real, real critical to this, to helping us, to help to guide us on this plan was everybody on this list, which includes of course staff, administration and patrons and parents. When we go into one of these study groups, we make sure that the teachers or the administrators, we make efforts to try to make sure that we don't dominate the room. You know, if we even see a parent make violations, if they want to add something, we pause and say, we want to get your feedback. We told them, this, this master plan is not slated for approval tonight. It's slated for review tonight. Then January would be slated for approval and we're gonna invite all these folks in. I don't know how they're able to come in, but they're all welcome to come in and you can thank them face to face. But obviously, you'll see some, we should have thanked Kristen earlier today. She was in here a little bit. Kristen contributed heavily to this. But you know those folks in our community, so you can send, you can thank them as you send and possibly next, next month when they're here. Next slide, please. Let you know that kind of our guiding principles on this were to analyze renovation versus new construction cost. I'm gonna go into that a little bit more in a future slide here, upcoming slide. It doesn't, I ramble while I'm trying to unclog. One hit, okay. Provide clarity regarding the expansion plan for early childhood identification. What we needed or what I've been mindful of is that is a priority for this board. And so we want to be mindful of that. And any master plan that we did, if you go back to the study group that Ms. Brooks and I did on this, we committed to board it. When we talk about long range planning, we're gonna put preschool in that plan. So provide potential attendance boundaries. I'll get into that just a little bit in the future slide. But basically, we've got two elementaries at any given time, one might have capacity, one might have, one might not have capacity. So conventional thinking on this and what we see in larger districts all over the state is you get some uniformity in your elementaries by basically reorganizing to a K3 and K4 and K5 center. And then as you have a capacity in one of those centers, you can change your boundaries a little bit and optimize the capacity of one. That does create a little angst because sometimes those boundaries can change every two or three years. Typically, you grandfather people in, but then you make those boundary changes, try to look into the future. That's just a challenge of growing school districts. So we want to be mindful of that. And this also provide future use for building sites that were available to repurpose. So we know already that when we occupy the new high school, we're gonna be leaving sizable facility at the current high school. And we wanted to be, kind of revisit that, be mindful of that. So I think that I'm gonna hand this off to Dr. Way for a few slides and I'm gonna bounce back in. I'm gonna excuse myself for just a second.
Yeah, the first slide just talks about our current facilities. One of our overarching goals, I think, is to keep our elementaries in the 500 or 600 student range. And so if you see a capacity, you know, right now with those four rooms we just walked tonight, you know, we're about the same square footage as West, which is good. And we've already had that talk about, hey, we might have to add additional rooms. But we are trying to kind of make sure that our elementaries, if we ever go to K4, K5, they're gonna be about the same size, hold about the same amount of kids, have the same amount of staff people. That's kind of the biggest thing from this slide. If you go to the next one, Elizabeth. The next slide you guys have seen before. If you, I think when RSP came, they had this slide. So these are the projections that they gave us last spring. And if you look at the blue, the blue is our middle school. So in the next five years, RSP was projecting that we're only going to gain about 30 kids in the middle school. So when I think of 30 kids, for me, I think of one staff member, one classroom at the middle school. If you look at the green, that's our high school, we're talking about 80 kids. And at the high school, they can handle more, so that might be, this is where three classrooms. So if you think of the next five years, we're gonna grow one classroom in middle school and maybe two or three at the high school. That is growth that we can handle any day of the week. The problem comes down in the red, as you see there, when you talk about 300 additional students and we're not gonna jam 30 kids or so in an elementary room. So you're talking quite a few, maybe 12, 15 classrooms more. That's a lot of growth in the next couple of years. And so we need that room at the elementary because according to projections, that's where it's coming from, the elementary kiddos. If you go to the next one, sorry.
So, you know, when you said what you said, what you said basically is we get a ton of kids at the elementary level and then as that, as those cohorts go up, we lose kids. So you do really expect that we're gonna continue to lose kids like we, I mean, it's happened all the time where, you know, we'll start a class out at 140 kids and by the time they graduate to 100. I mean, I mean, that's been the history here. Do you foresee that type of trend continuing?
That might not continue as we get more and more infrastructure in here, more and more businesses. People might stay more. But a lot of it comes down to where the jobs are and how far I have to drive. And so as more jobs come in here, that, that might change for us. And so we might have more elementary, more middle and more high school kids staying with us. But that's been our history.
Yeah, that's, that's been our history where you come to the elementary and they.
And most of the, the buildings going up, the houses are families with little kiddos and coming into our district. That's what we've been seeing. And so that might change. The housing industry is, is changing every day, so we'll see how that goes. But yeah, that's a good point. I mean, we might have more kids staying with us throughout their school years.
I think too, as our builders in the community start to build more step up hous, I don't wanna say step up housing, but you know, like not, not necessarily starter homes. Again, I think more families are gonna stay in the area because you can keep your kids in the same school district and kind of move up to the next house as your earning capacity grows.
I want to slow down Dr. Way's presentation here. We're gonna get some of this stuff in upcoming slides. But that was one observation Jen made. And so that was the representative from RSP. Dr. Way and I, and maybe Doug was in on that meeting too, but I said, what's the observation you make that's not in your, in your, any of your projections? And she said, we were a little surprised that some of the builders are doing exactly what you said, particularly south of the district. That there were upper level homes being built. She goes, just a little bit of thing that we talked about. And so we, I think that fits with what you were saying. The other thing I want to say was, we're just dealing with, any master plan's gonna be, have limitations and you're, or working off of the best thing we have and that's the projection RSP gives, you know, unfortunately. So we won't be able to look too deeply into the crystal ball here. It's a snapshot of what RSP is projecting and that's what we're, that's what we're kind of building the plan off of.
Hey, you hit the next one. So this is kind of where we're at right now. So current reality, if we're K1 at East and 25 at West, if you look at this number right here, 560 with a little asterisk behind here, this is not assuming the four rooms that we walked tonight. That's the additional four rooms that we haven't even built yet. So hopefully someday we'll be at 560 capacity over East and 600 if we just stay where we're at K1, 25. If you start looking down the line, we start getting tight. Things get tight in the hallways, in the classrooms, bathrooms, lunches, everything. In 25, 26 at West, we're starting to get close to the 600. Then in 26, 27, we're over that number. And then 27, 28 gets worse. These are all predictions that we had or projections from last spring. And in Doug's CSIP report tonight, I just pulled numbers. And so if we look at East, they predicted us to be at 259. Right now, we're at 272 in December. And then we were at 512 and right now, we're at 534. So we're already over a little of those predictions from last spring. But if you look at this, where we're at, we do nothing. We're gonna start getting in trouble in two years and then we're over capacity and we're way over capacity at West.
Mr. Crowe, do you have an empty classroom somewhere in your building?
No.
So the only thing that's gonna change from now to two years from now is their class sizes are gonna increase. If you remember correctly, they're already right there where we start to go along.
So that's our current reality. So that's, Elizabeth, you hit the next one? So when our group met, we started talking about the K. So when our group met, we started talking about the K4, K5, what would that look like? So right here, we came up, RSP came up with a couple boundary suggestions. There was one, two, and three. As a group, we came up with number two. That's really not an issue right now. I just want to talk about this. If we go to K5s, we check out this boundary number two and we do that. If you remember, we started getting in trouble, if we do nothing, we start getting in trouble here in the last slide, then we're in trouble, and then we're really in trouble at West. If we just went to K5s and we went to boundaries right now, you see that we kind of pushed that off another year or two, all right? So eventually, we're going to get in trouble at West, and like Kyle just said, it's going to get tighter and tighter, and we're already over these projections already. So that's if we did the boundaries. Then some of the comments, especially from our parents, was like, "Hey, we like having our littles be together, our K1s, our 24s. We like those kids being together. So what if we moved fifth grade to the middle school because we have capacity?" So that's what this slide talks about here. If you see here, we're still at the 560, 600, and 700 as our maximum capacity, and we're not in any yellow. We can project out, according to RSP numbers, that we're not in trouble. If we did boundaries, we're still in trouble in 27, 28. We're not if we move the fifth graders. And if you look at those numbers, it might be 28, 29, or 29, 30 before we get in trouble. And that's without doing any boundaries. That's just the move of keeping K1, keeping the 24, and moving fifth grade to middle school.
So from a fifth, so Ms. Baccus, this is for you.
Yeah.
So moving, and moving fifth graders from West to the middle school, from an academic perspective, what's the side effect of that? Is that a positive side effect or a negative side effect?
I personally see as a positive side effect. That's my personal opinion. I'm excited about it.
Anybody else have questions on this? Eventually, I think we have to pull two triggers. We probably have to pull the 58 trigger someday, and some way down the line, we have to pull the boundary trigger in order to make it happen and stay longer, but I don't think the boundary trigger is today. It's down the line a little bit. And one of the problems with, if we go to this boundary, and I think maybe one of the board members or our parents brought this up, is that even if we do do boundaries, and that extends us out to 27, 28, we start getting in trouble again, and we don't have another building, what are we going to do again? We're going to go hit the boundaries again. And so then, we might hit boundaries a couple times in the next five years, like some other districts have done. And so that might frustrate our patrons. So this is kind of the cleanest, is moving the fifth grade to middle school, and it extends us out a little longer. Elizabeth?
Go back one more slide. I want to, at risk of, at risk of, I want to get, I'm going to get both of you guys. At risk of being a little bit redundant, one more down to that next slide. Thank you. Risk of being a little bit redundant. This was a little bit of surprise for me. I may have been the only person in the room surprised, but I really thought, you know, conventional thinking from even our parents would be eliminating a transition from K1 and, you know, moving buildings. I based that on, that's, I guess, conventional wisdom from my perspective. But the second thing was, not a lot, but we did hear, even in my four years, you know, the challenge of having kids at two elementaries, whether it was parent-teacher conflict or something like that. I can tell you, whether it was just the group that we had in the room, or full moon, or whatever it was, it wasn't, you know, I don't want to overstate it, but we had pushed back on this, on the reorganization. And they really did, as Dr. Way said, we love our littles being together. Now, so we had to work through that as a group, and really what we said was, "Look, this is, this is easy to do, and it does push it out, but we have to come to consensus that if one of the goals here is to bring issues to our community that don't create a tax increase, we may have to pull this lever." You know, so kind of as Dr. Way said, this one is sooner than later. And this one is absolutely still on the table, and we were able to communicate that and come to strong consensus on that, but both these things are in play in the foreseeable future, if that makes sense. Aaron?
How does moving, I'm a fan of no boundaries, but how does that change the day in the life of a fifth grader? Like, would they, would they stay with one class? I know we went back to like not switching, or they, were they doing recess?
So I've gotten the amazing opportunity to watch our fifth-grade cohort from last year, being with them at West Elementary and moving with them to the middle school, and some of the problems that they were having with rotating, they aren't having this year with rotating because they're getting new peers in each class. So what I've equated to talk to them, they also have grown in age as well, but they said, you know, not being in the same class with the kids all day allows me to get that restart in that, in each class every 55 minutes. And so they like that. Our sixth graders really enjoy being able to rotate from class to class and getting a new start per hour, as you would say. And so I personally think that our fifth graders could do that, having the right teachers and the right infrastructure in place. Thank you.
Kyle?
Yeah, just one thing that sticks out to me on this chart, 27, 28, you had East that projected, again, projections 34 versus capacity of 560, but that's asterisk with adding four more classrooms.
Correct.
In that capacity of 480.
That is right. That's a very unique.
Yeah, not to skip ahead, but I mean, if, you know.
That's right.
This all comes down to body passing, things like that, and if we're looking at potential, you know, projects to expand the elementary school around here to further potentially avoid boundaries, would it be worth investing in those four additional classrooms or not?
Okay, that's good, that's good. And I'm going to go back to what Aaron and Austin and kind of ask Elizabeth to help remind me, because why, you know, why said, "We're not approving this tonight. We need feedback from you," but it sounds like there are some questions on the fifth grade move, obviously. So we need to bring some information back from you. So I'm not discouraging those questions now, because we can definitely field those. I don't know that we can answer them, but we will also, between now and the next board meeting, continue to send those questions, and we'll put something together of what that's going to look like for January, okay? Next slide, please.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, Mary.
Statement.
Yep.
When we filled the middle school there, it was a fifth and sixth grade win. So I think we moved fifth grade back to.
Yeah, I understand that's the history of it. Yeah. And in terms of philosophical, educational grade configuration, it's all over the place. You know, there is a middle school model. I am a classic seventh and eighth grade, you know, guy. My preference is a junior high seventh, eighth grade. So educationally, there's no, you know, empirical evidence that's going to say one way or another. So that's kind of the, you know, the track you're going down. So I think we can be successful in any configuration. And of course, we know the most important thing is, I think, what you alluded to earlier, getting the right people in the right place, right teachers in the right place. I think we can be successful.
I also have a fifth grade-related question.
Yep.
I believe the intent would be that they would still walk next door for their daily recess time, right?
For the playground?
Right.
I had factored that in. I bet Taylor's maybe.
Exactly. Okay. It is in the works. We're working on master schedule, assuming that is board approved that the fifth grade is making the move. We definitely are working on some of those factors that we know our young kiddos need.
The other thing to keep in mind on that is that at the middle school, we would have PE every day on a rotating basis, like once or twice a week.
Right.
So the fifth graders would get PE 55 minutes every day.
I know that, that's true. I just feel like at that age, they're young enough, but it's still so good for them to get to go outside and run and play. Really beneficial.
Elizabeth will underline PE and put BD beside it. So we'll try to, we'll try to make the case we'll wear it, not the others.
Yeah, and make more on for it.
Oh, of course, yes.
Yeah, and I just want to say, it's not surprising to me that you got a little pushback on the, on the boundaries. And from a parent perspective, I always loved when we had just kindergarten and first over at East Elementary. I always thought it was a brilliant decision. It was something unique that our district offered. Unfortunately, I know it's inevitable that eventually we're going to have to pull the trigger and have the boundaries, but I, it doesn't surprise me that there was pressure.
I think perhaps I was naive going into this thing. Yeah, thank you. Next slide, please. So of course, the whole goal here is, we're looking at this whole master plan from the most fiscal conservative lens. I think there's going to be other opportunities for the board in future years to, again, revisit this master plan and make changes. So this is kind of just the initial roadmap for it. But what we're, the goal is, how do we build bonding capacity? You know, how can we stave off those capacity challenges, build bonding capacity so we can address those? So this first three bullets here is if you did no projects, if you just were going to bank money or bank bonding capacity, it's not bank money, it's bank bonding capacity, and probably bank is not the right, create bonding capacity. You're paying off debt, and your assessed value is growing. So here in 2025, you know, next year, you have $12.2 million, and that's based on a 4% and 5% assessed value growth. Now, I will tell you that's fiscally conservative because we're outpacing that more recently in just the last four years right now. So you guys, we don't have to talk about that or discuss it, we certainly can, but if we hedge bets to say, "Are we going to outpace that growth in the next 10 years?" I bet most people in this room would say, "I'll hedge my bets we will." So this is still from a very conservative, fiscally conservative lens. In just one year, you jump up to $16.3 million, and in 2030, where we anticipate the problems reoccur, that's going to be $35.8 million. The way this master plan is laid out is down here, so.
So let's go back to the money thing for a second.
Up here?
Yeah. So how much could you do in addition to $35.8 billion? I don't need the answer tonight, but I'll need it for January. You know, obviously, you know, we're paying the lease purchase off, and with growing assessment, you know, we're getting that 20 cents from everybody, so there's going to be some funds freed up there too. How much lease purchase money could you throw in with that $35.8 billion to augment something?
I think that's a great question. So let's, if you would, let's make sure I nail that down, because all of this is just based on debt service, just debt service.
Because, you know, you know, again, that 20 cents, I mean, if someone builds a new house, I mean, the 20 cents we got on that, that's going into the operating right now, and then why couldn't you use that?
So this is all built from a much more fiscally conservative lens than what you're giving, because you're saying, "Okay, but don't we also have lease purchase funds that we'll pay now?" I didn't want to take those into account because I'm trying to do this, but I hear you, and I think it's a great thing for the board to know. So basically, what I'll ask people to do is, put out that projection. If we were comfortable with that amount of lease purchase debt, put out that projection and tell us what we would have in lease purchase that we could go get if we needed to.
Well, and then we, but we also need to look at our salary needs, and because obviously with the new buildings, you know, and we're going to have additional electrics and, you know, electric bills and all that kind of stuff, so we'll need to look at the deltas on our bills and salary schedules, and then want to figure out, okay, what's left that we could comfortably leave additional lease purchases. I mean, you're going to have to play those games too with the.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Okay, so when we're getting down here, this will be some new information. If the master plan options are realized, if you did everything in our master plan, which you will not, because some of it looks too far in the future, what would this look like in terms of your bonding capacity? Well, our master plan asks or recommends going out a year from April to finish the high school project for the performance gym. That's a year from April, okay? Not this coming, but a year out. That would leave you $8.8 million in 2026. So we've got a pretty good number on this because we took the mean average of the bids that just came back for our performance gym, so we're calling it $7.5 million, okay? So in 2026, yeah, you have to take some money out, but you've got bonding capacity still of $8.8 million. And then whenever you get to 2030, you would have $28.3 million. And our, and like I said, whenever you start talking about 2030, would I guess this plan's going to hold up? We're just, we're just giving you a road back. You know, we think that you'll have more options on the table than this, but this is what we're going to propose if that's, if that's the roadmap, if that's the path you took. So old high school renovation to new middle school with a projected budget of about $24 million to do that, and a renovation of middle school to what we are calling West B and preschool. Okay, so the middle school goes to the high school, and then that turns into West B. Do I think that name's going to hold up in 2030? I don't. But, so I'm going to give you a little more information on that in an upcoming slide.
Okay, timeout there. The issue you have is, now, we've got a page two that's going to happen at the high school now with 65 and.
I want to get there. Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to speak to it coming up.
Because I don't want to be wasting money doing something there where we're, you know.
Yeah.
Unless we don't want to have any more meetings, then we could just. Get rid of our meeting spot.
I have a question.
Yep.
On the performance gym, our storm shelter gym right now, will it have leakers?
Yes.
Okay, so theoretically speaking, gains can be performed in there.
We think JV.
Maybe lower level.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And seats, remind me, Dr. Way, that's what I was going to say, 400, 400 to 500, so it's not, it's not enough. But, but you know, we, obviously, we have our current gym too to get us through.
Mike, where I'm going at, and you know, just making a comment, we're going to have a lot of growth, and I'm personally more concerned about passing our buildings than the performance gym. I mean, just flipping them and waiting five years for that to secure capacity, probably the.
Yeah, let me, and I hear you. I hear you because you're elementary concerned.
Yes, but I'd rather go talk to somebody about the performance gym than I have a room for it.
So, but you got to let me.
I think we got it all pretty well.
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to field the questions as they come, but honestly, we're going to address some of that in a future slide presentation, and then I promise you, we'll even go back to slides as we need to, okay? All right, so next slide, please. All right, so this is going to be some of that new information, Kyle. So what were the Prop 6725 core projects? As you can see, in the high school, the new academic housing, the storm shelter, athletic practice builds, not all staying the same, okay? The preschool changes a little. Preschool, full-day pre-K classrooms are what we sold when we were talking about Proposition 6725. And we were hopeful that there would be a revenue source for that, but we were going to create the capacity for that. And, you know, that was kind of the buzz at the state. We know that's a priority for the state. They came through with MoQPK, okay? So we have added two full-day programs, and we'll be hearing a little bit more about that in January too, as we stand that, those two classrooms up. Okay, repurposed high school and central office. So what we had said was, we want to demo the east parts of the high school facility, central office goes to high school, central office renovation for preschool, community space, and boardrooms. So let's see how that changes to this master plan. So this is kind of a thing of, you know, break glass if necessary. Again, I think that the board will have better options perhaps on the table, but in that, from that conservative view, we just want to deactivate and preserve the high school as opposed to demo it and to eventually potentially renovate it for the Wright City Middle School, okay? So not demo it, preserve it. Central office stays here. We still think we can bring community space because that community space, well, is what we told, what we were talking about in props was, we're going to have an additional gym that we're going to be able to share with the community. So if we were able to get the performance gym at the high school, that makes that gym much more accessible for our community. And we've certainly heard that that's a, that's a need and a want. And then the boardroom, that picture was never really, really firm, but what we said is, if we could create a boardroom that we could share with the community for community meetings, whether it be chamber or whatever else, we'd like to provide that, okay? So what we, our thinking is, the money that we had, which was approximately $2 million, it wasn't, it's not quite $2 million, and of course, if bids come up, we couldn't have done all the things that were on the, on the table or for the original core projects for Prop 67 and 25, but we're talking about reallocating those dollars, not doing those things. And this is where it gets a little different too. East elementary expansion, of course, the four room, the four classrooms, storm shelter, but you'll notice four rooms. What we're saying is, this addresses kind of what you were talking about, Mr. Lewis, earlier, is adding another four classrooms to East Elementary. So when we did the four-room add up at East, we redesigned that, always thinking there there would be another four room. In fact, early plans of props, it was eight rooms, remember, because of budget constraints, we dropped that down to four. Now informed by another year or so and by RSP, we're saying reallocate the funds that we were going to do to create the preschool expansion and demo of the high school, reallocate those to another four room addition. And we've got a good number on that, $2 million. Why do we know that? Because we just built one. We've got a great cost estimate. In fact, we think even with inflation, it could come below that because the one we just did is a storm shelter. The one we would do would not be. So as, uh, Mr. Wilson, Eric snuck in there earlier, the, at East Elementary, the storm shelter that is currently, the four room add, uh, add that is currently there, that serves as the, uh, storm shelter, will accommodate the additional four rooms that were going to come along, online sometime in the future. Ms. Jones?
Does the bond and the lease purchase language allow for that?
The phone call I received at five o'clock out there while I was with the Board of Education confirmed it does. So we got a verbal confirmation from Stiefel today, uh, that it did. But they did their, they knew it was workable. It was just going to be whether we built, whether we spent bond of money or lease purchase money first, but the call today confirmed that it absolutely does. And with not, not shifting any money, just as the project is mapped out before the draw schedule.
From a PR perspective, what, I mean, because obviously we made promises.
Yeah, what are the challenges?
And what, and are we breaking promises or are we?
That's my, was my question on the, you know, we, we said, oh, that building needs to be demoed, it needs to be demoed, it needs to be demoed. So now we're going to come back.
And I think it's wise to do so, but if you don't agree, obviously that'll, that'll come out in the change of the plan. But I'm going to give you a rationale for that, I think in the next slide, maybe. No, I'm sorry, it's going to be another slide. But let me say this before we get here, go back to that one, because I don't want to run away from the board on this. I'm going to say it now and then you're going to see me repeat it. What's changed pre COVID, when we were looking at that, you had a renovation cost and a new construction cost that was fairly close. And I'll, I'll have the slide to show this better. And what's happened post COVID, renovation cost has stayed about the same. New construction cost has went crazy once. So that's changed, you know, that's forced us to change our plan. The, the, and saying that very even about that is, deactivating the building does not mean that you can't demo it later, but if you demo it, it's gone forever.
Well, I mean, I guess one thing you could say is, well, you couldn't do this renovation with kids in, kids in there. I mean, you know, it's going to be a massive renovation, so.
Yeah. And I know I'm throwing a ton of information on you and so that's why, again, we wanted to give you at least the 30 days to kind of, you know, process this. So this, this is, uh, next slide, please. This is something Elizabeth put together for us and I think does a pretty good job of mapping this out all in one slide. But I want you to orientate yourself to this first. So up here it gives you a little key. So projects in motion, what we know is happening, right? And then projects that are proposed in the master plan and then the visionary projects, right? So these are the things that are, are happening and they're, they're up in the schedule. So we are more confident about them. These get, these are proposed to the master plan, we're less confident about them and we're even less confident, confident about these. We think this is a good workable plan, but, and, and I'm also not giving you a plan that tells you everything you want to hear. I'm giving you the most fiscally conservative plan to work from. I, I truly believe it only gets better from here, but you're not going to know that until every year passes by. You know, whenever you have three years of double digit assessed value, this plan needs to be looked at again because you're going to have more resources to, and better options. So let's look at this, uh, just piece by piece. So the projects in motion are expansion, uh, preschool expansion through Mo Q, Mo QPK grant. Occupy the four rooms at East Elementary. And then of course, it will, I'll jump, uh, yeah, occupy the high school in January. Those are the projects in motion. Then we'll jump to proposed to the master plan. We've talked about this fifth grade booth that staves off our capacity challenges. So does that have to be done next year? It does not. We think we probably have two years, right, to the projection. But right now we're thinking better to do it next year than the, the following year because the enrollment is outpacing the projections even on this year. So we think we've just got it, you know, slotted here. And then a no tax increase to finish the high school, the performance gym at the high school. And then again, reallocating the funds that you were going to use to vacate this building and move central office to the high school. Reallocating those funds to a four room addition at East. Okay, addressing what we are fearful might be coming in that elementary enrollment challenge. And yet we would probably recommend, I would probably recommend when you do that in the fall of next year is when I would project you'd be doing that, I would write an alternate to that bid for six rooms of pre K at the high school at a, at the very lightest cost you could do because they're not going to be there forever. Okay? So if you want to continue your priority of expanding pre K and especially if there are more Mo QPK grants available to, to take advantage of those, you got to have space, right? Well, you've got a whole high school that we have had some very preliminary work done by the architect to use the west entry at the high school. And that would be the entry of the pre K. And really in our mind, we're thinking you could do two rooms at a time, you know? You can get a cost estimate or an alternate for all six rooms. I don't think we're going to have enough resource to do that, but you can get that, that'll give you a really solid cost estimate. And then you can do those two rooms at a time. And remember typically with the, with the grants that are available now in Mo QPK and the grants in the past, when you expand preschool, typically, not always, there are money for that, those renovations to do that, that go along with the operational grants. Yes?
So on the proposed and master plan, what I don't see is the movement of the boundaries because on the previous slide, I thought those were either or and not and.
So I, I think I'm following you. What we don't know is, and what we, you know, uh, talked through at the study group is, this is the, where's the, the, excuse me, uh, where is my, okay. This fifth grade to middle school is the easy lever to pull.
That's right.
And so we don't know when the second lever gets pulled. We could put it here, in fact, in early draft of it, that we got, uh, feedback from the study group was, where do we have it at? Do you remember, Elizabeth? I'll say it was in 2016. And then one of our, uh, folks from the group said, I thought, we, we weren't sure what we were going to have to do, that we said we aren't, we said, well, we can do an arrow that gives it like two or three. And then I think we made a, did we make a bullet on it? There was a suggestion.
Go back to the slide that had that fifth grade on there. Right there. So what I see on there is, is 27, 28, 587. Um, no, no, the last one. I only see 504.
Yeah.
So if I were to, now I'll go back to the other slide, so you've got 27, 28, like 504 kids at, at West. What I see on there is in a gray box is 2930, K1, our K, our bound, new boundaries at 2930. That's what I see.
Oh, that's what your vision.
Well, well, based upon the numbers you showed us.
Yeah.
I mean, 27, 28, you're only going to have 504 kids. So let's say it's 504.
There's another 96 kids of capacity though.
Well, well, okay, but hold on, but in 27, 28, then, and then what's going to happen is when you get 50 kids a year, 2930 is when you're going to have to do the boundaries. Or, or if you're going to be conservative, then 28, 29, then you need a gray bubble that says, K1, uh, two boundaries in 28, 29. That's, that's where that belongs on that.
I like, I like the feedback, so that, that's where we can, uh, put a gray bubble in there to indicate our best guess of when we'll pull that lever.
Can we put it like in a bright red bubble because we really don't want to do it, like you want it on there?
Yeah.
I'm like, stop, no one.
That's why it got removed at this point because parents were like, we don't want to see that. Other, other people are going to go, ah.
Well, that is right, yeah. They thought there might be a little knee jerk factor to it, like it was inevitable. I mean, I think if we put it in gray, especially the way this last model has been built to say, because you know, the point is that I've already made, but I'm going to make it again is, you know what you're doing here, right? This, the board's got some ponder to do and you don't have to make those decisions, uh, you know, anytime real soon on these. These, we just, we just want a vision. We just want something to build from. But I don't think it would be a bad idea, uh, Mr. Jones, to maybe put that in here in a gray bubble and then we'll just have to.
Keep the word possible.
It's possible, yeah, I like that. This one came from one of our parents, in fact, visionary projects.
And all, I mean, none of this is cast in concrete. This is.
Well, perfect, Erin, and let me even make this, this point. Anything you do in this master plan gets approved by standalone, uh, agenda item. You approve the, the, uh, master plan, it doesn't trigger all this stuff. Every, if you, when you approve the master plan, we're not going to work on this. I mean, we may be going to work on it, but we're not doing that until we get board approval to do it. Obviously we got to do some front loading work. Great, guys, that's perfect. That's exactly what we need, uh, to kind of keep this, this moving. So let me get to the gray here in the visionary projects because I don't think I spoke to it. No tax increase, bondage, renovate the old high school to the new middle school and West B renno. Again, we're just, we're taking a stab at it, occupy the new middle school, but you can't do what you need to do to West B until they're, the kids are out of there. And then West B or the current middle school would become an elementary and you've got space for elementary for, you've got, you've gained a ton of capacity. There's another little trick to that though, uh, it's not on this slide at the, before I, before I jump. Also, oh, it is on this slide, I apologize, PK. So light renno of middle school to PK elementary. I'm going to get you, I'm going to give you more detail on that in a slide, upcoming slide, okay? All right. And then just to give you an idea of how quickly you grow bonding capacity, because right now we're sitting at about 300 million of AV. When you get to 2030, even based on that four and five percent increases, which is relatively conservative, you can build bonding capacity. You cash out here and already in 34, you've got $21 million built back because now your bonding capacity is almost 450. I think it's 430. That makes sense, so. Okay. Any questions before I leave that slide? Kyle?
Just to clarify, between East and West B or West Plus, whatever you want to call it for combining the middle school and current West, would the assumption or goal be to maintain kind of the status quo of what we have, have K through whatever at East and then the rest of the primary grades and the mega building?
Unknown. My, my best honest guess is you're going to have to pull the trigger on that, uh, on that reconfiguration. And then that will be, you know, for future administrations to recommend and future boards to consider as to whether you want, I think, I mean, I could give you some options, even when you go, uh, for example, and I'll, I'll try not to go down this, this trail too, too long, but we have discussed, at least at the cabinet level, that it would be, if the community truly embraces this K1, when you went West A to West B, you could reconfigure back to that. What's unattractive about that is you reconfigured to a K4 potentially, and now you're going to reconfigure back to a K1, 3, 4. But that's, that's for the future, uh, administration and boards to consider.
Whether the community has to ask themselves or ourselves, are we more comfortable with reconfigurations of buildings or established scenes, factories?
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
One option is not perfect.
Yeah, that's right. And I, I, you know, that, you know, that's why it's going to be so important to bring this back out every year and get the board, uh, you know, get the, not the board, excuse me, get the community in tune with where we're going because things are going to be happening over the next decade for, for our community. Um, I'm going to go to the next slide, if you're ready.
Did you say when, when are you going to pull the trigger on the fifth grade and middle school? When, when is that decision going to be?
The, the decision needs to be made sooner than later if we're going to do it next year. So there is one advantage that we've identified, we've got, you know, a little more time to work on this. We'd like to bring that to the board potentially next month as an, as an action item. And I, I've got a, a slide, a slide in the cabinet that talks about next steps. But as we see it right now, you know, based on the RSP capacity, or excuse me, RSP projections, we think that we could do that in 24, 25 or 25, 26 because we don't meet those, uh, you know, we start getting tight, but we're not at capacity. Uh, right now, we've got this slated here, so we think it's a better idea to do sooner than later, but there are a few advantages to holding off one year. Now, I have one advantage is fiscal related and that's that as we vacate the high school right now, if we don't get deep into our contingency, we'd like to buy new technology for the high school, for the new high school. We would reuse some of that for that fifth grade because those rooms are not, not equipped and ready to go for the, at the level they need to be technology wise. So there's a little fiscal advantage to holding off two years. It's, you know, I don't want to say it's negligible, but it's close. Uh, so right now, I would say if you just said, hey, Chris, uh, choose or die, I'd say do it next year. You know, that's where I'd be at.
Because we're only essentially eight months away from that being down into effect.
And if we say we're going to do it next year, we, we need board approval on it next month. So we, you know, we're already working on it a little bit, obviously, uh, but we've got much more work to do.
If we don't move fifth grade this year, how tight are the classrooms going to be at West next year?
To the projection they, at West, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. To the projection, pretty tight. We could go back to that slide and look. If I have capacity, but 25, 26 was your year you went orange.
Like we're already saying that we're above what we projected for 25, 24.
That is right.
So we can be going orange the year really easy.
That is right. And, and I mentioned, you know, you know, it's kind of a new day for our community in that, you know, uh, we've talked about the, the benefits of bringing the CSEP out and staying vibrant within because of our, because of our emphasis on academic performance. It's going to be very important that we bring this out. I know I've repeated that, uh, tonight, but even the RSP projections, we got to get those folks back in every year to, to calibrate our projections and move forward.
Yeah, is that cheaper when they come back and just like update it?
I hope so.
Yeah, no kidding.
I hope so.
Do we get a refund on the?
On the back. Yes, on what they missed on again. Okay, I'm going to go. All right, next slide, please. Okay, this goes back to that estimated cost again, you know, you have renovation and new construction. So I was coming out of that environment as I entered, uh, Wright City and, uh, just kind of got a sour taste on, uh, with, you know, renovation projects. And if that cost difference, you might be able to rationalize demo and new construction. The problem is what happened in new construction from, from 2021 just to 2023? Now that's cooling a little bit, but that's kind of our new reality. So that makes renovation back in play because as you see, it's not moved as much. So there, that's the rationale for the change. And I think it, I think it's penny wise, it makes good sense. Again, if you demo the building, you've done it, it's, it's gone. If we preserve, deactivate and preserve it, we can get more information, we can, you know, get another year down the road and we can see if we need to reoccupy it at some point with renovation, with renovation. Next slide, please. Okay, this will be some new information from, for you, so kind of, uh, orientate yourself to that slide. So you got Wildcat Drive, you got West Woods, you got West A, just for our purpose tonight. Uh, Dr. Wade kept on wanting to call it, what was it, Way Elementary and Smith Elementary? But I, I would love to. Uh, West Elementary A, oh, is it, yeah, West Elementary B. And so then I mentioned that a preschool would go onto West Elementary B. And so you can see here on this wing where PAT is now, what we're proposing in 2030, the plan can change, but what we're proposing is make that your preschool on the edge, on the end there. And the other reason why we like, well, there's a few reasons why we like that is, one is it's close proximity to the early childhood center. The second is that it creates equity in terms of space among the three elementaries. So wherever you do that and cut some of that, uh, what's currently the middle school off, West, uh, Elementary, West B Elementary and East Elementary with the four room addition, the additional four room addition, all come in at approximately 65,000 square feet. So that's kind of important if you want to look long range, that they are all about the same at about 500, 500. same at about 500, 550 capacity-ish, maybe up to 600. Uh, because what you can get in the community that's, that's growing a perception of, either the, the small school districts gets more, the small building, the small elementary either gets more resources, or it can be just the opposite. The small building never gets any resources. So, it's, you know, it's not a critical element, but just looking long range, if you can keep your elementaries at about the same student enrollment, and of course, that goes hand in hand with, uh, square footage, that's better. So, I kinda like the idea of the preschool taking some of that square footage and kind of assuring that your West B doesn't get too big. And then the other thing here is a FEMA shelter in the middle, because remember, these two schools do not have storm shelters. Okay? So, in my career, I've had three FEMA shelters put up. One at Dora, two at, uh, Waynesville. Those are either, I've never got a 90-10 match, I've gotten a 75-25. So, those are federally subsidized. Uh, those, like, planning can help with that. We have tried to initiate that within two times, they've had some leadership change, and it just hasn't been the priority. But they're a willing partner in that, and so, that would be on the board in sometime in the future. And if you looked in the actual, uh, master plan, uh, book that, that's in your board docs, we've got that as in other considerations, okay? And so then, of course, a corridor going to each one of them, but I want, you know, at least from my perspective, and obviously, that's gonna change, you know, the weight of that, uh, in the future, these need to work as two autonomous elementaries. They are not one giant elementary. I'll say, and I got you, Kyle, covered it. I, I would say that, uh, from my experience, you don't wanna find yourself where, where we found ourselves in a prior district, and we had the two, two of the largest elementaries in the state, and both of them were 1,000 kids. And that creates problems. Um, you're constantly trying to figure out how to get those schools within the schools, because 1,000 K-whatever kids running around is a different animal. And so, you can, you can get into that out of just desperation, because you keep adding on your elementaries. So, Kyle?
So, in this overview, would this be an expanded preschool from the expanded preschool at the current high school?
Correct.
You'd have three East, or three, or...
No, that, thank you, Kyle, and it's a point that I just jumped completely over. Uh, when we said we'd move six, and, you know, potentially six rooms to the high school through both QPK or whatever grants out there, in this vision, it's move those back down here.
Does the middle school's...
Yeah, yeah, that's right. In this vision. And what's to say that we don't identify another facility that we can afford that becomes our early childhood center in 2027 that takes priority over something in this plan? Absolutely, you know? Yeah, we just don't, we just don't know. This is just, I'm not gonna say it.
Why is that all? I don't understand.
I know. I wanted to. Okay, I'm gonna go to the next slide, I think.
Real quick. Why architects designed this?
Uh, they are, well, all they did, yeah.
I did.
They made this for us, but there's not a lot of investment in that, yeah.
We asked you.
Jeremy made it about 15 minutes before the board. Okay, next slide. Okay, the highlights of the plan allows for no tax increase proposals to address capacity needs. Renovation of current high school to Wright City Middle School utilizes existing athletic complex. This is just something I've had trouble getting over. You know, we never had planned for, for where the middle school's gonna go. Now, uh, Mr. Jones from my early on said, you know, not he didn't say conventional thinking, but he said, kind of the plan, never on paper was, that we would always occupy the high school with the middle school. Am I putting words in your mouth? That was just kind of the general plan, right?
That's kind of what I, yeah, said.
And so, uh, and, and, and I didn't wanna do that, because I don't like, you know, occupying, uh, space that that is that ran rundown. And if you, you know, your renovation dollars, and again, and your new construction are close, gosh, do the, do the new construction. But you do gotta live within your means, right? So, but I always had trouble that if we didn't occupy that, we're gonna leave the investment of the athletic complex there. And, you know, that's, you know, I can live with that, but then the other thing I always felt like, if we maximized our current middle school and just built a new elementary somewhere, you always had that challenge of not having athletic facilities at your current middle school. You know, so that kind of guided us on this, because that's just a challenge, whenever you don't have those facilities closer, you know, you're practicing in a field. And that's okay right now, but it's not gonna be okay, it's not gonna be your expectation in five years. Uh, allows for a south campus, so keep in mind, what, if, if this plan is realized, what you've got in the end is what also Mr. Jones has been telling me, you gotta find some property, you gotta find some property. You know, because we, we're gonna be drilling, so we're always kind of, our radar's out for where can we put another elementary. You do have, uh, an opportunity with the others, the F Highway side of our 85 acres that the new high school's being built on, in my, from my, from my view right now, you have two options. A south elementary, or maybe that's where your middle school goes, if the plan changes. And there's nothing wrong with the plan changing, you know? Like I said, we're just putting that first, first draft up there. But, if you guys ordered me to, and you may, if you say, you, okay, we wanna go that route, the dollars change, right? They trade drastically, and I can't give you a feasible option without going to our voters for a tax increase. Now, could you have that option if our AV outpaces projections? Yes, but I, I don't wanna commit that to you. So, this is the lean master plan.
It's not a good question. I know capacity is really our primary driver here.
Yeah.
But, um, something I didn't see here was any renovations for our current West Elementary.
Yeah.
And, um, particularly, I think the interior's starting to show its age a little bit, and if we wait another 10 years, you know, I just don't want us to get to a, a bad place with that particular building.
I'm gonna stick you on that.
That's a great point. I'll have Elizabeth take that note, and I tell you what I...
What I wrote down on there.
Oh, perfect.
Oh, well, Elizabeth's already got it. So, I can't have that, uh, for January, but I tell you what I can have, if, as you've sold the master plan, we have an appendix there, that has some great information in it. You know, it's more thorough, uh, information, a little deeper than this stuff. I, and you'll see a cost estimate, for example, for the high school renovation, uh, that would be the middle school. I think we could do a cost estimate, we could get a cost estimate for West. Have them do a, you know, kind of a light, uh, evaluation on it, and give us a cost estimate on renovation there, and at least put that in other considerations. I think it definitely warrants a place there, and it may eventually warrant a hard year to go on, you know? I think it's really good.
Okay, great, thank you.
Preview that next slide for me, because I think I'm passing it over here, but I wanna set Doug up here.
Yeah, you're gonna set me up.
Okay. Uh, yes, it is. So, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of, uh, risk of maybe beating him to the punch. The next piece of this does not really fit, it, it doesn't feel like intuitively fits with master plan. I'll tell you why it's here, is because since I got on campus, early out Wednesdays were brought to my attention as a problem. Now, I will tell you, early out Wednesdays in our collaboration are the reason why we're gonna, uh, be talking about a APR score next month that we're very proud of. It is the reason for our academic achievement increases of the past. But there are some negatives to the early out, and Doug's gonna talk about those. So, that has literally been on our cabinet agenda for four years on mic. When can we go and address that? And so, we're gonna make a proposal to you tonight, that has been, almost four years it's been on our, on our radar. We just, and we found, like, we felt like this was that opportunity, because we thought with the rebounding, there might be a, a need to look at the schedule and reconsider that. So, I haven't set that up very good for you, Mr. Smith, but kind of give you the reason why this made me feel like it's a little out of left field, but there really is a reason. We thought, okay, this is the best time to address it, and so, we'd like the board to consider that, and Doug will outline that for you. Okay, before we do that, this is a logical break point. Does anybody need a break here, real quick? I think I need a, a two-minute break. So, I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna take a two-minute break here, so that we can, um, uh, do what we need to do, and then we'll come back in two minutes. Is that okay, Doug?
Yeah.
Uh, Doug, I think you're up, and go.
Yeah, Elizabeth, you go to the next slide if you would, please.
All right, looking for my mouse again. So, happens when I make changes.
Okay. So, uh, like, like Dr. Burge said, I've been here 14 years, I think that's about the length of time that the, uh, Wednesday early outs have been going on, in some different iterations and different forms, we've done a lot of different things with them. Uh, but just, uh, to recap for everyone our current situation, we get out 60 minutes early every Wednesday. Uh, we utilize that now for a lot of our impact team meetings, especially at secondary schools, for professional collaboration. Uh, as needed, we might do some PD. Okay, but we have a couple of ongoing concerns. Uh, some of these were really brought to the attention during the study group meeting, where we had like a separate committee to talk about this. Uh, one of the big ones is that all of our elementary teachers right now are unable to get 60 minutes, because of all of their duties after school, getting kids to the bus, um, taking kids to the bus, getting back in the building, walking kids around. And so, in order to really have strong impact team meetings, they are doing that during their plan times one day a week. So, our elementary teachers, in order to get really full time, because, you know, on Wednesdays, they end up with about 40 minutes after everything's said down, and by the time you get something started, you're finished. So, uh, at West Elementary, they do impact teams on Tuesdays during their plan times, and East, right, they'll do those on Thursdays during their plan time. Whereas, our middle school, high school are able to utilize the Wednesday time to do that. And so, I know that there's a little bit of an inequity issue that some of our elementary teachers brought up during the study group. Uh, another one of the biggest issues that we have had almost since Wednesday early outs has been created, is that all of our secondary students who are in activities have nothing to do. School ends at, you know, 1:30 or 1:15, and get out of the building so we can have meetings, but you have to be back for practice at 2:15 or 2:20. And it's put a burden on a lot of things within the community. We've had, um, I can tell you, I guarantee you that the librarian over at the senior regional library would tell you, she would appreciate not, not having this. Uh, you know, we've got Coach McDonald's, we've had a lot of issues, um, to be frank, on the West Elementary playground, with some of our students, uh, being there. And then, I mean, again, just the obvious one, that after you have taught all day, have worked all day, and now it's, okay, stop, and we're going to do a collaborative meeting, I think the end of the day has been a little bit of a challenge. So, this all has been something that's kind of been on our radar. Uh, when we brought this to the study group, really those second two bullets were more the ones we were prepared to discuss, and I had elementary teachers who really brought up the other point. You know, the buildings are getting their own plan time, and we are not. And so, if you go to the next slide, then Elizabeth, uh, what we would like to propose after going through the study group, is that we move to a late start on Mondays. And that, uh, we make that a 75-minute late start. That way, elementary teachers who have duties of getting kids off the bus in the morning, and getting them and transporting them back to their classrooms, would have the ability then to have a full meeting. We would offer childcare at the elementary schools for families, and that would be beginning at the normal drop-off time on Mondays. So, we would be able to use some of our own staff, and I'll get to that in just a minute, but we would offer that. No students in the buildings outside of this childcare. And then Tuesday through Friday, we have the same schedule, so there will be nothing on Wednesdays. And our transportation would be provided during the school day. So, just like now, our transportation rolls an hour early on Wednesdays, our transportation now will be 75 minutes later every Monday. Uh, in order to gain a little bit of feedback from the community about this, the study group did send out a community-wide survey with a number of questions about this, you probably got that. Uh, linked right there are the survey results, like a summary of them, um, if you would like to take a look at those. But I will tell you that the chief concerns that came out of that for the people who said that that would be a, an impact for them, the two chief concerns were, now I had a childcare, which we're working to address, uh, that was the number one primary concern. And the second one was transportation, okay? Among certifying staff, this was viewed as, as really positive. So, if you wanna go down to the next slide, Elizabeth, this is actually one of the questions that we asked on the survey and some of the data. Uh, even though it was bolded in there, where it says that the district provided no cost before school, how much childcare on this day of the week, how much would this change? Be an impact to your family? We had probably 20 comments that said, need childcare. Okay, need childcare, need childcare, that was the number one biggest comment. Uh, some people, uh, put in there, if, if you picked four, that it would be a major impact, you had to put a reason why. Uh, I had three or four comments out of those 81 that said, oh, I thought I was picking the whole thing, I thought I was picking the one, I got the one that was more mixed up. Uh, this really is not an issue for me. Um, and so, a lot of the other ones had to do with, um, transportation. Um, yeah, and so then we go on down to the next slide. Uh, we asked if the district did move to this, what day of the week would work best? You can see the overwhelming, uh, selection of that was Mondays. And then, here's what we believe to be really the benefits of this. Teacher plan equity, elementary teachers receive ample time to plan, and then they can do collaboration and impact teamwork without having to lose time during their school day, during the week. Uh, this would eliminate a lot of those challenges of secondary students and activities. One of the benefits, I think, that a lot of the administration and a lot of the teachers also brought up, is that gives you a chance to come in on Mondays and be productive, and have a meeting, and help plan the week, and be motivated and get going. Uh, some of those considerations, adding childcare really eliminates what we believe to be the major concern among families. And it also helps a lot of our hourly employees, who we would use to provide that, uh, and give them additional work, because right now, a lot of those people on Wednesdays, they clock out at, you know, right when the school day ends, and don't get that additional hour they would at this, in this plan. And really, when we went to the late start Wednesdays, I mean, or early out Wednesdays, people had to adapt, um, to that, had to adapt to the transportation issues. If, if this gets approved in January, uh, we would have until late August for people to turn that, to work that out, um, and how that would work. And so, we really think this is a better plan overall. It has a, um, you know, it has a, a pretty big desire among our staff. Uh, the majority, the wide majority of our community felt like this would have no impact on, really, whatever they were doing, a little impact. So, what questions can I answer about this?
Matt, any questions?
Um, I guess my only question would be, so the intent for the childcare on Monday mornings as of now would be K through five?
Yes, I mean, given the fact, right now, we would be doing this at the elementary schools.
Right, right. I wondered if there was any thought to extending that to K through six, or...
I mean, that's something that I know is, I think that would be a bit, a bit dependent upon what the decision was made about what we're doing with our, with the previous part of that plan.
Right, right.
You know, I think certainly, um, certainly that would have to be in the discussion, you know? It'd be something that we would discuss, like, let's say, fifth grade does move to middle school, um, is there a need for that fifth grade, or do you cut that off? You know, do you cut that off at seven, so you do it for the whole middle school? Um, that's a decision that we would have to make, really dependent upon, I think, the other one, is depending a lot on the other idea. But yeah, I think we're open to helping our parents, families with their kids.
Dave? Did I hear you say, are you or aren't you going to provide transportation for the, uh, the Monday when, when...
It would be 75 minutes later than it is now.
I know that, no, no, I'm saying, for the childcare, are you gonna make those kiddos up? You're not, be parent at home.
Yeah, be parent at home. But we would let them drop their, their kids off at the exact same time that school would begin now.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, whatever, the, the building opens now, building wouldn't open for that.
So, then it probably wouldn't be a whole lot of difference then, if you did provide that service for the middle school as well?
I, I don't think so.
Financially... Financially, not a huge, since you're not running transportation, right?
Right.
It wouldn't be a huge cost factor to providing that.
An hour and a half additional pay or 75 minutes additional pay for hourly employee delivery.
Hourly employee, it's gonna take, yep.
So that's the cost of childcare you're talking about?
Yeah.
Well, to add the middle school, right now, that's just slated for K through fifth, correct Doug?
Right, correct. Right now, it's just the two elementary buildings.
And what Beth said, if we would add that to the middle school, so the only cost then associated would be staff for 75 minutes one day a week for these kiddos and two, three staff members auto.
Well, you're getting to one of my questions, so have you calculated budgetary?
Yeah, they did, we ran that, we ran those numbers.
Less than $5,000. Thank you.
For the year. Now that's just, that's just calculated, I think, for the elementary.
That is, well, okay, so less than $10,000.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I have to answer one more question. Anybody else Dave? Mary?
Well, that was the same question I was gonna ask about, the daycare and transportation. But overall, I think this is a great idea.
I totally agree that I think for our teachers, it's probably better for them. As for parents, I think you have frustrations with Wednesday, you're gonna have frustrations with early month, or it's a toss-up, but if it is that important to our kids' education and is driving scores, figure it out. I really have no comments though or questions, thank you.
Yep, pal.
Obviously, the childcare would be somewhere or away so that teachers could absolutely concentrate.
Yes.
Oh yeah.
Aaron?
I really like the late start idea versus the early out Wednesdays, just for all of the issues that you discussed. For the late start, if, because we're not providing transportation and when the building's currently open, my only suggestion would be maybe increasing that by an hour, because if I have to be at work at eight, I cannot drop my kid off at eight and still be there at eight. So maybe if we opened up, if we increased that, gave those child, you know, pairs or whatever, add an additional hour so that building could open at seven or something to allow parents to be able to drop their child off earlier and still get to work on time. That would be my only concern with, eight o'clock is a hard time to drop off a kid if you don't have bus transportation. But I'd.
Now would be a consideration we would have to take and it would also probably require some certified staff order to be there overseeing that as well. Yeah, that's something that we can talk about and chat for next week.
Okay, anything else Erin?
Nope.
Okay, I have one additional question. So the problem with a late start on Monday is, if you look at our school calendar, we're out of school a lot on Mondays. So, and I don't need an answer tonight, but I'll need it for next month. How many professional, how many professional development days are we losing from going from a Wednesday to a Monday?
But we're adding 15 minutes.
No, but, no, but here's the issue. The issue is, like, if you look at our school calendar.
I understand where your issue is, but note that we're adding 15 minutes to the calendar for every professional day too. So you're losing days, you're gaining, you might be gaining enough time. It's just, I.
Well, I'm worried about the, well, okay.
Yeah, we had, we had, we have already kind of talked about that and discussed that among ourselves and I think it's, you know, I think it was what, three? And then that becomes then something that the calendar committee, as they begin to wrestle with the calendar for next year, needs to address and take a look at.
Yeah, you're just, you're moving off of Monday.
Moving off of the Monday, so.
All right, well, I mean, just by that analysis next month. And then, you know, because that's gonna be one of my, you know, one of my deciding factors, whether I propose 2-0-1-6 bill, early, late start 2-0. Now, the other problem with Mondays is, people don't want to get up and have a meeting Monday morning. I know, I don't like meetings on Monday morning, but that's, I digress.
Like I said, that, we kind of put that out there for the community and for the staff and like I said, Monday was the overwhelming selection overall.
Look how much love there is there Austin, they like Monday!
That was the overwhelming.
I think Dave, I think Dave had another question.
I do. Is there a number in mind as to when we will stop doing the, the, taking, letting kids be dropped off before school during these meetings? From what I understand, a lot of people don't utilize the childcare in other districts, especially on days when Warpin doesn't have school on Mondays, but nobody brings their kids there.
I was compelled to mention earlier, and it's based on, you know, Doug and Jeremy and I's experience and, you know, we've all been part of other school districts that whenever PLC started, collaborative team started. And usually, you know, there is a community, you know, feedback that we want childcare and typically, it's grossly underutilized and, and sometimes goes to nothing. And I think that's where you're going.
Exactly.
So I think what we do is prepare that it's gonna be utilized, but understand that if it dwindles to a point that we're, you know, then that's okay too, if families figure it out. But we certainly don't want to force that on families, right? We want to give that opportunity.
I think we would have to come up with some kind of a staff member to student ratio.
Yeah.
That helps drive how many are going to be there and how's that was gonna look.
I didn't know if there would be a metric in place, you know, when we hit.
Twenty to one.
Five kids, you know, whatever, we're a full plug on this thing. I didn't know. Does Warpin still provide childcare on Mondays?
I cannot answer that.
Yeah, I know, that's true. Because that was their big selling point when they went to four days a week, that oh, we'll have childcare on Monday.
Those districts that are, go to four day and now it's evolved from childcare to doing interventions, you know, bringing in special groups and, you know, I don't want to speak necessarily to four day, my guesses, those efforts wane as time goes on.
Sure.
Okay, anything else on Doug's proposal?
Yes, I do. And you sparked this question for me. Austin, so this is all about equitable PD for our staff. Mr. Grove, current how we are right now, how much real value-added PD are our teachers at elementary getting right now with their extra duties?
I'm not sure I'm tracking. You mean, how they're doing it, so on Wednesdays, to Doug's point earlier, we're not really getting started till quarter to, so like when we dismiss at 2:32, it's a quarter to three, sometimes three fifty or 2:50. And contract time ends at 3:30 and that's 40 minutes. That's not a lot of time to really get rolling. But then, they are using one of their plan periods on Tuesdays to have their impact meeting or data meeting for the other content area, the content area they're not talking about all of a sudden. So your question is, how much are they losing? How much is it affecting?
How much really value added time are they adding in PD? Basically, how much time are they going to save over contract or?
Well, and I don't, I don't, I tell them, I'm a stakeholder at 3:30, let's go, you know, your contract timed up, once you go home, enjoy yourself. But those Wednesday meetings are definitely of much lower value than the Tuesday meetings, where they're getting their entire plan. But the trade-off is, they're losing their plan time to have those valuable meetings on Tuesday.
So Austin, when you're doing your cost benefit analysis next January, I think that's something you need to take into consideration, that while there may be a couple less PD days in the year, the time that they are making up for if that move into Mondays is probably gonna be drastic and they're getting their planning periods back.
That's, that's a good point, thank you.
Yeah, and Austin, the more I've talked to teachers, they love, they like the Monday idea too. I know that went out to, yeah.
I know there's an unreasonable, I work out, you said at eight o'clock meeting on Monday morning, you get shot.
You're not in education though. I mean, it's either deal with 20 kids or deal with your coworkers for an hour, I don't know.
I think teachers seem more as a buffer to serve.
All right. In all seriousness, we're not shooting anybody. So.
Good clarification. Wow. Wow.
So, any more, any more questions for Mr. Smith? I almost called you Smith. Okay, next agenda item. Just a culminating slide here, just to give you a look before, before that Ms. President is, so in January, we'd ask you to consider the master plan, please provide feedback from now until then, but we've certainly got a whole, Elizabeth over here wrote us out a Google Doc of feedback already, so I appreciate your effort on that. Yes, Ms. Williams?
Well, I just, I still have a question.
You bet.
Okay, because I was holding mine until the end.
Yes, you were, yeah, I was trying to trick you on that.
So my only question slash concern, well, several, but that I didn't tell you about already, is, so from that, then we would have an early child center here, here, and then possibly at the high school.
The idea, and Kyle touched on that, I didn't explain it very, the, that capacity that we would utilize at the current high school, when we vacated, we would do an alternate next fall for six rooms of preschool at the high school, but we would want that the lightest touch renovation we could, probably bathrooms, you know, and rooms at a very low level, and then also a boardroom alternate, you know, which we think is, be really economic to do that, really. But, and then at least to that plan, they come over here, they come back here and we vac, the preschool, the interim preschool vacates the current high school and comes back to West B. So that, so not three locations to, early childhood center and into West B.
So I guess my concern is the efficiency of staff for having two separate locations and the efficiency of our resources. Like, I, I, it just, it doesn't seem to me, at first glance, very efficient to run them out of two different locations. Um, I don't.
Erin, I share your concern. I think it's the best thing we've come up with right now. And remember, that's in the visionary piece of it, well, I say that's in the visionary piece, the, I guess the more permanent plan is the visionary piece where it comes back here, the, moving the six rooms to the high school is out of necessity. Where do we have, you know, but I share your concerns and I, I think maybe something will develop, particularly if we have more resources to deal with.
Because then, what, at what point does the trailer go away?
Yeah.
The mobile classroom, sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
A mobile classroom. Yes, we're on a classroom, not even mobile. So that, my, from that, my overlying concern would be.
Yeah, you agree with that.
Efficiency of the early childhood center.
Understood.
Visionary wise, I mean, if that's a visionary, didn't we build that building next door with the intent that it could be added on to?
We did.
So that could be part of the possibilities rather than how you separate it.
Absolutely, it could come into play, yeah. It's just, it's, the thing that's gonna come into play with that, and it's perfect that you mentioned it.
Money.
It's money, yeah, that's right. Your new construction versus occupied space that already exists.
Tax.
Yeah.
I got one. All right, pretty, go ahead. Erin, are you done?
I'm good, thank you.
Oh, is the, is the decision made, is it, is it fact that the central office is staying here for schedule?
Only, only if, you know, that would be our plan moving forward, if the board approved to do that. But that, that decision would actually come next fall. We would probably need to read on what your intent was, but the bid package, the revised second bid package is not anticipated to go out until next fall. So even if you approved the master plan and said, okay, we're okay with that, but we're gonna get a much smarter guy in that chair, or, or female, next year, and we'd like them to relook at that for us and represent it to us, I think that's very fair.
When does that decision need to be made? I mean, like, what, what's gonna take place in the space where this was supposed to go?
Per Prop 6725, what was gonna go in this space was a preschool. We were gonna double our capacity.
And, and this building was supposed to go to the old high school.
The folks in this building were to go to the old high school. That's right. That's right.
Okay.
But, so just to be clear and going back, making sure that I want to repeat it so I can hear it out loud, that the master plan, you know, if the board approves the master plan next month, you're still not committing to do that. I think what we're gonna do is, we're gonna authorize, bond architects, so start developing that plan a little bit, so you have a little resource in that. But you don't do that until that second bid package goes out. That's when you say, we're reallocating the money, the one, somewhere between 1.5 to 2 billion, that we had to renovate this for a preschool, renovate the high school for central office, we're gonna take that off the board and go put four additional rooms at East Elementary. So I think you could, you know, and that may need to be clarified next month further, I think you could say, okay, we're gonna go with this master plan and that sounds like a logical plan, but we are gonna continue to study it even up to the point of we go to bid, you know.
Can we get the RSP company to do a touch base before we put that bid package together?
Sure.
Yeah, I think that that.
So maybe have them come in in July or August for an update?
Probably.
And what we want to do, probably to ask Gina, what, how much time does she, you know, we can, but I want her to give us the honest evaluation of how valuable that's gonna be, or does it need to be a full year? But I bet they would be willing, well, they would be willing for her to pay them.
Well, yeah, but ask if it's valuable.
Yeah, it's valuable.
I want to know.
Usually every school district that uses them, they come back in April or May every year and they look at last year's data and then try to make.
So maybe as we close out this year, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, usually it's in early May, we kind of look at where we're at for the year and then project for the next year.
So that works.
That would be really amazing for the new person.
Yeah, we'll confirm it and as long as it's affirmed, we'll get them on the schedule. That's our criteria.
I have one more question, sorry.
Yeah, of course. It's a very important stuff, even though it is, a lot of it's in the visionary, I appreciate the board's.
Way back to your financial assessment page, the first line, 12.2 million available fiscal year 2025.
Yeah.
And you said that's at like a four and a half to five AV number.
Correct, that's right.
So say that number is nine to 10 percent, does that 12 million automatically go to 24 million, does it double?
No, 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 it does not, no. But it would go up, of course, but no, it wouldn't double.
It wouldn't double.
No.
If you had to guess and just, would it go up 3 million if it went to?
I'd have to make a phone call to Steve.
Really? I didn't, I didn't have any.
But I tell you what I can do is, and Nate can do that just really quick, and whether it's just for the board or whether we want to put that in the master plan, they can run various projections. What they want to run is the most conservative projection they can.
Well, and, and that's what I'm asking, because these numbers are almost so conservative that they're almost.
They don't even work for us.
You know what I mean?
They don't even work.
That's how I feel.
Now, the cautionary, the cautionary tale, Brett would tell you, because that's what I, I told him whenever, the four to 5 percent they didn't balk at. You know, he said, we can do that, that's a problem. I said, why is it that, you know, the standard model is the 3 percent, 2 and 3 percent that grow, whenever, that's not our reality. That's not very many schools, right? There are schools. I'd say actually, let me take that back, in terms of numbers of school districts, there's 500, the majority of rural, that is the reality. But that's not if you're a suburban, urban school district. And they tell the cautionary tale of Branson. And Branson certainly blew up, but they predicted it too soon and they built a master plan on an aggressive projection and it blew up on them. And that was the cautionary tale, we're not touching that again. So, and what Brett would say is, we'll do whatever you want us to do, just understand we're not, we're not, we're not suggesting that you're gonna realize 8, 9 percent growth. But I absolutely could have them run a little more aggressive projection and just share with them.
And I'm not saying we have to use that number.
Right.
You know, and I probably wouldn't feel comfortable using that number, but it would also maybe be nice to see that number.
Yeah, and again, no, we're, it's, no need to be repetitive, but I'll just slide in there real quickly. I wanted to give you the most fiscal version to lay out first. I just think it gets only better from, from this, and I think there's some good, good stuff in there, but I also am very confident it's gonna get a lot better, you know? I'll, I'll do that, Dave, I'll have that read.
That's all I have.
You already got it, okay, thank you. You all did an excellent job of discussing all that and you all asked good questions and I appreciate the conversation. Anything else before I go to the next item? Next item. Okay, legislative platform, Chris asked that I run this real quick. Yeah, and the only thing I'd add to kind of preface it is, I did ask Representative Myers, invited him tonight, he had a schedule conflict, he is verbally committed, I know he will be here as long as nothing comes up, but for January. So he is scheduled, I'd say penciled in for, for January. Okay, does anybody want to change anything in the state priorities?
I think I asked this question once earlier, just, I apologize, but the support of virtual education, can you explain why we support that again, real quick?
For the virtual?
Yeah.
Uh, let me, let me read, what, what bullet is right here? It's, we support virtual education. It's the board's platform, so was that, I think that was your.
Well, I mean, I think.
I think it's the clause that when such courses are rigorous, courses are taught by Missouri certified. I think it's the clause that when such courses are rigorous, of course, they're taught by Missouri certified teachers.
Oh, there you go, thank you.
Qualified college professors, because a lot of the virtual, uh, options are from out of state companies or from for-profit companies and are not being taught according to, uh, Missouri learning standards or by Missouri certified teachers, so I think it's that clause in there that is, when such courses are rigorous and are taught by Missouri certified teachers.
Thank you.
And I think it's, we, we know that it's happening, like, virtual education isn't going away, so, um, the, you know, the clause that we can put on there is to make sure that at least it's to our standards and by our teachers, um...
And, and this mirrors an MSBA, uh...
Yeah, and that's why I asked the question.
It mir, it pretty much mirrors that.
I just, you know.
Hi. Well, I mean, Spencer, you know, had that pass that he could do it, and then now we're just...
We're stuck with it.
We're stuck, yeah.
Virtual is not going away.
Uh, does anybody have anything else that would like to question or potentially change or whatever?
Is this fifteen percent bonding capacity, is that, uh, is that, you know, is that what we're...
So basically, right now, that's the maximum.
Oh, lifting it, okay, lifting it, okay.
Yeah, so, so basically, the question is, if, if we could go to twenty percent bonding capacity, then obviously, you know, look at those, look at those numbers that were on that previous, uh, presentation. You know, there, there's a lot more funds available.
Yeah.
And I don't think, and, you know, the question becomes is, how, how financially distressed do districts become if they go to a twenty, twenty percent bonding capacity? And, and, and the argument I would make is, we, we wouldn't. I think, you know, because we haven't plenty of assessed valuation to support a twenty percent, so that would be...
And that was more my question, just to make sure that that was hitting on, I know that's kind of your, um, your drum to beat. Um, my only thought that I would like to change on it, I like all the, the, um, statements. I would like for the, um, one that says, we support local control, just, oh, wait, where is it? Oh, we oppose legislation that erodes the authority of local school boards and undermines the voice of local voters, I would like that to be moved up a little bit.
Oh, so to just keep the statement, just move it to the top?
I like the statement, just, I would, I would like it to be towards the top.
Because people read stuff at the top first?
Correct, yes.
Okay, fair enough.
Maybe number thirty, after about funding.
I think Beth had, uh, must want to say something.
Just as a general question, I'm just curious what we do with this, we, I assume we send this to our representatives?
And we take it to Jeff's city when we go lobby there on our Jeff's city day?
Sure.
And Jeff will get, gets a copy, Representative Myers gets a copy of this, and whenever he comes in, uh, he'll sort of...
And then Senator Brown.
Senator Brown too, yes, of course, yeah.
Anything else on state priorities? Okay, moving on.
Uh, there's an action that I do...
To prove, no, well, we're, we're going to federal.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're not done yet. It's okay. Federal legislative, federal legislative positions. Does anybody want to change anything? I'm hearing nothing. I'm hearing, we, we're good with this still.
Need to change all the names at the top. Several names of the Board of Education.
Oh, yeah.
And it says, my new box.
That's it, point twenty-three?
Mm-hmm. Yes, so change the heading.
Oops, sorry, we use wrong heading.
Yeah, okay, we'll make that happen.
Thanks, Mary, sorry about that.
Beth, you're not on the board.
There's Kyle. Alice is still busy.
Allison, hi, hi, he's not.
I'm not married.
Okay.
All right, let's go.
Bring it back together, so other than that, nothing on the federal legislative positions? Okay.
I make a motion to approve the legislative platform.
Second.
Okay, with the stipulation, we're going to move that one item to...
To number three.
To the third bullet. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, seven zero. Uh, CSIP reports, sorry, principals, you've had to sit in here so long tonight. Um, I'll make sure I ask you one question. Middle school, any questions on the middle school, uh, CSIP? High school? West?
Was ever making good progress on the heat map project?
Most of them. I, I had rounds with, uh, all of the teachers that do that, or one or two questions that I thought should be included, and then I got schooled up a little bit on one. One of them was, and there were a couple, I was like, I'd like to see a few more touches, but they're, they're working on it. It's, you know, for first year doing it.
Yeah.
Uh, we're running along as we get it out, and it's been pretty positive, yeah.
I'm sorry, I heard that. Any more high school questions? Okay, now West.
Mr. Crowe, appreciate your delta comparisons to last year and, and the explanation. It's very busy to look up there.
I agree, I second that, I appreciate that.
East. Any questions on East? I think Doug would have to take those questions tonight.
Uh, you just did.
Okay, central office attendance and enrollment, any questions with that?
Yep.
Go for it.
Um, attendance, is this year-to-date or?
Yes.
It's year-to-date, okay, so.
Well, it would be, I don't know, that through...
Through, whatever.
December.
Through November thirty.
Besides West, none of this is good. Um, I, I know that we struggle as a district, I recognize it's only four CSIP points, but you look at all the districts around us, we are underperforming, so I don't know if we have an opportunity to, you know, readdress truancy with a new prosecuting attorney in the county. New judges in the county, if we can strengthen those relationships, because this is bad.
I think it's a great point on the new, new appointments, so that's something we can reach out to and, and try to make some ground on, and we do identify that as a big obstacle, so maybe the new bullet will do us well, yeah.
And I do wonder, you know, I know our target, the state target's ninety, ninety, uh, whatever, um, but I just wonder what the reality is of the districts and the state meeting that, because I've not heard from any who are knocking attendance out of the ballpark, because everybody's terrible with attendance.
It's, it's not official, but we did get attendance points on this APR that we're going to talk about in January.
We give off, or we have, we, we have two.
Two of the four.
Thank you.
Little progress. That's embargoed information.
You know, since COVID, we don't, we don't want our kids coming to school sick, so I have a, you know, I know, well, the high school, that's, you know, that's pretty bad. Um, anyway, so we just need to figure out.
But they're around stuff when they're...
Kiki, kiki, kiki.
We need to know if they're, if they're sick or if they're just... So, you know, there's a difference there.
There is a difference.
There's a big difference there, because if they come to school sick, then everyone's going to get sick.
I mean, middle school barely, barely beats you.
I'm against it.
I mean, what do you, what troubles are you guys seeing with, with, what do you guys think is trouble? I mean, okay, I mean...
I mean, it's pretty involved.
Yeah.
I mean, if you talk about a number of the things that are, um, contributing to that, right, from, if we go from the pandemic to now, and the, the kind of some of the things we see, and I don't, I don't know if I might, you know, in this segment right now, go through the laundry list of things and some of the things I've heard, and even just anecdotally what I notice, you know, on a day-to-day.
So have we asked, have we asked the students, you know, why they're not showing up?
I have a, a student group right now, and attendance is on there, we just met first time.
Yeah, but I mean, the kids that aren't showing up, are we asking them why?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're trying to... All that too, but, uh, Austin, what I'm telling you is there are a lot of different reasons for that, and there are a lot of home situations for that too. Uh, I, I see so many of them, um, that are directly related to that.
I mean...
Yeah, and I know you could say we have that in other bullets, right? Uh, but I think sometimes those concerns, when you're talking about a TH student, are exacerbated.
I, I know, we, we've talked about this a lot, a lot, and I think, you know, so when we talked about incentives, we've talked about ways of doing this, and, you know, I, you know, so I think we're just going to have to...
Well, I think the idea that was, that was brought up about talking to the new prosecuting attorney, because I believe it's a, it's, this isn't an issue in any school district, any career people I've visited with, it's just a school-wide issue. I mean, this becomes an issue with numerous resources in counties and municipalities, and all of those people working together have to make that work, and, um, I, I don't know, I hate to say it, but there's, you know, two of the lowest performing school districts in Missouri, year in and year out, are the two in Warren County, when you look at attendance, and, um, I don't think we're not doing anything that other districts who have much higher attendance are, are doing to incentivize or to be punitive on that, on that front, but year in, year out, you know, you're looking at two of the bottom twenty percent of attendance districts in Missouri are right here, right next to each other, so there's several going on beyond what's just happening with the education.
Unfortunately, we can't force parents to take, to drop their kids off if they don't see the value in it, or they have other things they want to do, which is why we really need to strengthen our partnership with those forces in the community that can assist us.
I think that's where our energy needs to be.
Yeah.
So the idea of...
It'll make your principals feel a lot better.
Well, the idea of partnering with, what did I do here? Uh, the idea of partnering with, uh, with the power to be, I think, goes with the conversation. Yeah. I'm taking one. All right. I just lost mine.
Mr. Agenda?
Central office.
Central office, so now we're doing, uh...
SPED.
SPED. Okay, I think that covers it. Uh, does anybody need to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, what are you pulling from the consent agenda?
E.
Item E, bills, okay.
C.
C and E, anything else? Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, sans item C and item E.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. Item C, which, uh, person are you wanting to abstain on?
Tabitha McGinnis.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the employment sans Tabitha McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve employment sans Tabitha, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. I need a motion to employ Tabitha McGinnis.
Still moved. Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Those that abstain?
Aye.
Six zero one, Dave Micus abstains. Okay, bills, item E. Kyle?
Yeah, page nine, expense to McKenzie.
Okay. Okay, I need a motion?
I have something on bills too, Austin.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Just to clarify, on page three, the thirty-three thousand dollar expense, uh, for Aruba, that's the networking system.
It's great.
Somebody going over.
I wish.
I would verify. All right, thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the bill sans the one to McKenzie.
Still moved. Second.
There's a motion in second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. I need a motion to approve the bill for McKenzie.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in second to approve the bill for McKenzie, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Six zero one, Kyle Lewis abstains. In accordance with, uh, section six twenty-one of the revised statutes of Missouri, the R two Board of Education will go into closed session to discuss six, students, fourteen, records which are protected from disclosure by law, three, personnel, and thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records. I need a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in second, any more discussion? Local starting with Austin, yes?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we're in closed session, let's, uh...